Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the city council meeting of June the 13th, 2017. Thank you for coming. We have a full-packed agenda, and we are glad that you're here to participate in it. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, we'll start with Member Ashby, Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenere, Gera, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg. We do have a quorum. This meeting is not broadcast live this evening as the county budget is still going on, but there will be a replay on Saturday at 7:00, excuse me, 7:00 PM on Metro Cable, Channel 14. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker's slips are located in the back of the room on the ledge. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it into the assistant clerk at the front. We also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need them. Thank you.
Okay. City attorneys, since we did not have a closed session, there's nothing to report out, is there?
That's correct, Vice Mayor. Nothing to report out.
Very much. Okay. We have a special presentation for our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like Councilwoman Ashby to introduce this group.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jennings. You probably noted the cuteness factor on this side of the room is heavily outweighing the rest of this building. Ladies, would you please come forward for a moment? These brilliant, beautiful young women are the Girl Scout Troop 2275 from North Natomas. And Molly Nealan Wright is the leader amongst them today. She had a project that she did to teach her troop about local government. And as part of her effort to teach them about local government, they have joined us here today and are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance with us. But why don't you, really quick before we do that, just say your names and how old you are and what school you go to, okay? Go ahead.
I'm Molly Nealan, and I am 11 years old, and we go to Westlake Charter School.
Good.
I'm Felicity Clark. I am 11, and I also go to Westlake Charter School.
My name is Lauren Gomez. I'm 10, and I go to Westlake Charter.
My name is Chloe Chisholm. I'm 11 years old, and we all go to Westlake Charter School.
Very good. Westlake is a great school. So glad to have all four of you ladies here today. You ready to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, go ahead. Tell them what to do.
Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, ladies. I don't know, the mayor might have a question for you. Hang in there for a second.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Here's my one question for you. What are you going to do when you turn 18 years old?
Oh, go to college.
Well, go to college. I hope that's one thing. That's definitely one thing. I was thinking of another thing, though. What must you do when you're 18?
Just leave home.
Leave home. You know, the answer is vote. To make sure that you participate in democracy because you start doing that.
Oh, you're suing now.
And before, that's right. Some think that's good, some think it isn't so good. But you vote, you participate, you get involved, like you're doing tonight, and then you can do anything you want in life. So, thank you. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate it. Good job. So, we moved, there is no closed-session report, obviously. We did not have a closed session today. Let us then begin, as we always do, with public comments on matters not on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll call three at a time. We'll start with Wanda, and then we have Janet and James Clark.
Hello, gentlemen, ladies. I've been gone because I've been to Texas so I can pick up my granddaughter so she can see what, how the country is being run. And I'm so disappointed in what you guys have not done that I don't know what to say. I believe, I thought we were going to be voting, or you guys were going to be voting on what was going on with Warren on the 6th. What happened to the big thing that happened, supposed to happen, on the 6th of June? It's been stonewalled, or it's gaslighting, or somebody's doing something. Yeah, I know, you can look all you want, Mayor, but you're the one that stood up and said, "On the 6th, remember, on the 6th of June, we're going to be doing this." And where is it? The homeless is still out there, homeless, and there's 13,000 people out there. 13,000! And you're giving money to restore tenants' courts and stuff that's inimportant about human life, living human life, food, a shelter. I was going to sit down and write all this stuff up, but my three-year-old granddaughter has kept me so busy. I was going to bring her in here so we could have a three-ring circus with her, too. But I thought, no, I'm going to come here and say my piece. I still don't think you guys are doing your jobs. We have people that are on the street and going to the street on a daily basis. And I know none of you guys are concerned. If you were, we would have immediate relief now. These people need help. If you were on the street and you could, you have the capability of helping somebody, you would do it.
All you want, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I apologize last week that I lost my temper. That's not really who I am, but I'm frustrated.
A lot of us are.
Thank you for later this evening voting on the, I'm sorry, I just have, I've got to get my mind together. There's just so much going on.
Take your time. It's okay.
Thank you. For the pilot grant, last week I had said, up until I retired, I was a policy analyst in the Governor's Committee for Schwarzenegger and Brown. Immediately prior to that, I was a grant manager for the state of California for the WIPA grant. And what I had heard last week was that you were going to consider the grant. And as a former grant manager, it's difficult for people that apply that aren't rah-rah, especially where we are right now. We have so many people that are homeless, so I'm grateful that you guys are going to, it looks like, move forward with the grant. I was frustrated last week. It was my understanding that you were going to vote on if churches and nonprofits were going to be able to help homeless people, and it wasn't on the agenda. We need to, we need to come together. I'm going to give my name and number.
Thank you.
If there's something that I can do to help, I'm going to put it up.
Thank you so much. Just to clarify the agenda, tonight, we are taking up the whole-person care application, $64 million of funding to help the homeless in Sacramento. We'll take that up later this evening. We plan a comprehensive shelter workshop that includes the issue that you just described, mending our ordinances to allow churches, synagogues, mosques, nonprofits to provide indoor shelter. We will be having that workshop with action on the 27th of June, two weeks from tonight. So, that's the calendar.
Thank you. It's so needed. Anything that I can do to help.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Hey, James Clark is next, and then Sharon, it looks like Gottswich, and then Robert Copeland.
So, every week, we start this meeting with this pledge. And the very last words of this pledge is, "With liberty and justice for all." I can't stand for that pledge because there is not liberty and justice for all. We still have 13,000 people being criminalized on our streets every night just for existing without a place to live. How can we sit every week and repeat these words, liberty and justice for all, while continuing to allow a policy that criminalizes the poorest in our community, those suffering the most in our communities? I am excited about the fact that there's going to be money coming in to help with housing and services, but that's still going to take time to complete. That's still going to take time where there's no liberty and no justice for those criminalized through the anti-camping ordinance. There's no liberty and justice for those who have to go to sleep at night worrying whether or not they're going to wake up to cops coming and confiscating their belongings and taking them to jail. There's no liberty and justice for the people who've been killed by police, and the police are still on the force. All they get is a paid vacation, and some of them even get a medal for murder. Where is the liberty and justice that this council speaks of every single week? I'd like to see it. Maybe then you'll see me stand.
Following Sharon is Robert.
Thank you for allowing time for the public to speak, and congratulations on getting the grant for whole-person care and putting some bathrooms in the park. My name is Sharon Obergewich. I am a Green Party member, a Catholic, and a Scientologist. None of these allows me to ignore the homeless problem. The library and the courthouse have been in the news lately. They say there is a toileting issue regarding the homeless. I say they have the wrong target. The blame rests squarely on your shoulders. You are the city mothers and fathers. All you have done is take punitive actions. You have taken away the right to rest, the right to own personal property, the right to have toileting facilities, the right to get free food, and the right to have a place to call home. Not one of these punitive actions has stopped a person from becoming homeless, nor have they stemmed the tide of homelessness. Einstein said that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. Not one of these punitive actions has lowered the homeless rates. It is time to find other solutions. You could easily have bathrooms throughout the city. There isn't a person who doesn't need to go sometime, including tourists and other people. You could have all the blighted buildings converted to no-cost and low-cost housing. Are you willing to confront this problem? Maybe we should bring 9,000, I hear now it's 13,000 homeless, in to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Robert?
Thank you.
Following Robert is Dave Janay, and then Armando Flores.
I was at the Disability Capital Action Day over at Cedar Chavez Park, and we had a moment of tribute to our person that recently died, Francis Grace Child, who I admire and I consider a friend because I'm a member of DOCS, which is Disability Rights Group here in Sacramento. We were busy at the Capitol. And another thing is, City Councilmember Carr and the rest of you City Councilmembers, what's going on at Stonegate and Cedar Ridge? I think that's the tip of the iceberg, and the members of ACE are going to expose that. We're going to, we're going to find out which landlords rent substandard apartments, and we're going to have them fixed. We're going to have code enforcement coming down on them because I am sick of hearing people that are living with cockroaches, mold, flooring that's substandard, water damage on the ceiling, looks like they're going to fall. I'm sick of it, and we're going to have it fixed. Thank you.
Dave Janay?
Can focus in on that, please, because what I want to talk about tonight. We have a crisis called 911. You all know about it. You talked about it on the 16th. I heard our police chief talk about it. I heard members of council talk about it. This is real life. That picture is something I took when I was on patrol, as we did for many years in this city, from 10 o'clock at night till 3 o'clock in the morning. This is 1:30 in the morning at 19th and I Street. I pull up on patrol. I've got a man standing over someone laying down, bleeding out. I don't know what I have. I'm a civilian, but I know officer safety and no public safety. I have to determine if the individual standing over him is a suspect and a threat to me. It takes a few minutes, giving some commands, to find out that this is another homeless man trying to help, but he doesn't know what to do. He's been screaming for help, and nobody came to his rescue. I gave him instructions on how to put pressure on the wound as I was calling 911. Of course, I called 911. The cellphone number for 911, as I pulled up and saw the scene, immediately I called that number. It was ringing. Throughout my instructions and realizing I was in a safe vein, I pulled my vehicle and set you away, and I blocked the lane of traffic. We got the pressure on the wound, and by the luck, a CHP cruiser was rolling southbound on I Street, was more interested in my car being parked differently, and pulled over, turned his lights on, got out of the car, and I yelled, "Man down, bleeding out, call fire." Station 2 responded right away. Now, this is anecdotal, but it happens often. When I log in with the police department at 10 o'clock at night, I call in from my resident's phone usually, saying we're going to hit the street where we're going to be, what our game plan is.
Mr. Janay, thank you, sir. Your two minutes are up.
At 3 o'clock in the morning, Mr. Mayor, I log off. Sometimes it takes me 29 minutes. We need to help our dispatchers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Glad you're feeling better.
Armando?
Armando.
And then Joan Louis Kennard and Victor Brazelton is our last speaker.
Good evening. Sorry, I was trying to analyze how I was going to word this to you guys. As the mayor tells the joint people to get involved, you know, they say you need to live by example? So, I think you guys need to try that in our city. Why don't you try getting involved and see what needs to be done, that needs to be repaired? I'm just going to go through a couple of things that have happened in Sacramento that a lot of people don't know, but you guys know it. Our bathrooms have been taken away from the parks many years ago. We still don't have bathrooms. You're adding a great renovation at a park. Hopefully, you'll have new bathrooms in there that people can use. We have people in the community complaining all over the city about the smell of feces in the area, different areas of the town. It's not even downtown anymore. It's in Natomas, it's Midtown. And when they send questions to you guys, all you guys say is, "Please send us a picture and information on what happened." That's it. They never get a response back from their district people. So, that's really nice to know. We're still working on our tent city that we have many months working on, and like my friend said, there's 13,000 people in the streets suffering every night because you guys are not making a move. A couple nights ago, a person that has been working hard in Sacramento for several years was attacked in the middle of the night because he was sleeping on the street. He's in critical condition right now at the hospital. Nobody cares about that. Why should we? I think we should all have right to rest, right to use bathrooms, right to a place to live, and right to eat. Finally...
Sir, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Yeah, but I just need to ask you one thing. Please help raise funds for these homeless projects.
Thank you.
We really need them.
We'll be talking in detail this meeting about what we intend to do.
Hey, Joan?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and everyone. Again, God gave you this position, President Trump. Love you, sir. Don't bring the prediction of World War III. You are a Christian, and the Holy Bible states war and rumors of wars. North Korea won't take kindly to wars and even rumors of wars. Please don't bring this to a generation to come. We don't want the wars of the world to come to pass. People enjoy peace. I, Joan, enjoy peace of mind. Anyway, 95,000 AD, don't want a war to come to pass, people losing their lives. We, United States of America, have cemeteries full of people, known and unknown, already fighting for their country and others. President Trump, be a good Christian, show some peace, and be nice to the United States of America and the world.
Victor Brazelton? That's our last speaker.
Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak. First of all, I want to say thank you for the agenda item for health care for the homeless that is, that we're going to speak about tonight. I think when we look at 11% of folks who end up becoming homeless because of health care issues, that it's definitely going to be a step in the right direction. But I do want to talk about an issue that's not on the agenda tonight, and that's housing. While this will take care of health care needs for folks who are homeless, it does not help the city with what we need, which is housing. And when we talk about the idea that folks right now who are in the community, like the young ladies who stood before us, we have some elementary schools that are sitting at 35% of students who are homeless inside of the city. What that means is, is until we decide to address the issue of housing, how we're going to make sure that people have the ability to be able to afford a place to live, I know that this is a heavy burden on the shoulders of this council, but it's something that you must address. The other issue that is not on this agenda is Councilmember Warren's tent city. Again, we're looking at 100 or 1,000-plus people who are refugees inside of this city. There are people who have no place to live outside of the streets, and we have a council member who has stepped forward to say that he is going to offer a solution to 100 of those people. And each week, we wait. Each week, we're asked to be patient. But I'm asking you to move quickly upon these issues because the hope of someone who's trying to fill out a job application on the street doesn't feel like much. The hope of someone trying to be able to move from the streets into another avenue of being productive inside of the city doesn't feel like much when there's not resolutions that are offered from this council to be able to help and support them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brazelton. That is the public testimony for items not on the agenda. Of course, we have significant public testimony for the agendized items tonight, and why don't we move to the consent calendar?
We have a special presentation.
I'm sorry, we have a presentation. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a rare pleasure. We have two heroes in our midst, Fernando Medina and Jasmine Chappell. Why don't you come up? If you're both here, LaShelle, I know you're here as well. I'm not sure if Jasmine made it yet. We knew that she was not here yet. Fernando, thanks for coming. We wanted to take a moment to thank you and Jasmine for what you did at Alder Grove on April 8th when a vehicle crashed into an apartment, and you leapt into action and helped free Tabitha and Dacia. Is that how you say the name?
Dacia.
Dacia, who are here tonight, hi, from the apartment where the car had crashed. And it's a rare, but noble thing that you did to leap into action and to help, and we wanted to recognize you tonight. I don't know if you want to tell us what happened that day?
I mean, at first, we just seen the car...
Come a little bit closer to the microphone.
At first, we just seen the car driving down the street, and then after it hit one of the cars down the way, it hit another car, and it swerved straight into the house. And then after that, we came out of the house, and then we ran down the street and just jumped in there.
What inspired you to climb over the car and help?
I mean, nothing, I didn't, like, nothing really inspired me to do it. I just wanted to make sure nobody was in the house, but then they're in the house. We ran down there, and then, like, when it happened, it just, like, none of the parents, none of the other people around, the neighbors, they're just standing outside like they didn't know what to do. I mean, they're grown adults, so I would expect they would have did something that would have helped out, but nobody jumped in and helped.
Thank you for being a great citizen. LaShelle, I don't know if you want to say something on behalf of SHRA, and then maybe I'll ask if you want to say something. Tabitha?
Absolutely. We, you know, we had this unfortunate incident, and after finding out what Fernando and Jasmine did, we were just totally moved by their story and the fact that they really jumped in to assist not only the people who were in the unit, but also the driver of the car without any regard to their own personal safety. And it was a very serious accident. Structurally, you know, the house could have collapsed, and they just leapt into action. And we really need a lot of young people who are willing to really go above and beyond and to really give that assistance. And so, we're very proud that Fernando and Jasmine were able to assist, and we also have the people that they were able to help as well who are here.
Oh, my. Tabitha, if you want, you don't have to say something, but if you want to say something. It must have been very scary to have a car crash into your house, and then...
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry. It was scary. My daughter and I were asleep because she was really ill, which she's not a child that gets ill like that. But it was about 12:30, and a car came in our house. I looked downstairs, and I'm holding my daughter, and I didn't know what to do. And we were trapped. I apologize. And I just held her, and I told her, "I love you, I love you." And we were just saying, "I love you," back and forth to each other. And I see Fernando and Jasmine, and I didn't know what to do. I just was so happy but scared. And they ensured me that they would get me out, and I said, "No, no, there's a car. It's going to blow up. Go." And they ensured me, "No, we're getting you and your daughter out." And they got my daughter out. I started having an asthma attack, and I don't know how Fernando found my inhaler, but he found my inhaler, and he got us out. And I'm just forever grateful to him and his friend for helping us.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your experience. And I guess Jasmine also helped the driver of the vehicle who was injured. So, we have a special certificate for both of you, and I'd invite the mayor to come down and take a picture. But I also want to present you with something very special, which is a challenge coin from my office, and it recognizes your bravery and is a symbol of our appreciation for what you did as well, so...
Heroes and heroines in our midst. Wow. Please bring us at least one or two of these every week.
What, accidents? Well, you have to have accidents to have...
Excuse me. You're out of order, Wanda. If you can't speak out, you're going to have to leave the room. If you can't speak out, you're going to have to leave the room. Okay? That's the way it is. Okay. Let's move to the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have items 1 through 17 that are on the consent calendar. We have a couple of those who have signed up to speak. I should also note for the record that on item number 2, Member Warren will be recusing himself. Item number 12 is going to continue to June 20. And item number 15, Member Warren would like to make a comment. So do you want to proceed with public comment, and then, Member Warren?
It's up to you, Councilmember Warren. Do you want to wait for public comment? Okay, let's hear the public comment on the consent calendar, and then we'll take council comments.
Okay, so item number 8, then, we have a speaker, Victor Brazelton. And item number 8 is the independent budget analyst review of the proposed budget. So Victor will speak on that item. And on item number 11, we have Michael Voy. And item 11 is the regional crime information sharing program.
Thank you again. Consent calendars are meant to be able to push forward agenda items that aren't going to have controversy on them. We had 17 agenda items put forth on the consent calendar for an up-and-down vote. And number 8 is an independent budget analysis, which calls specifically for the council and the mayor to answer questions about the budget that this independent budget analysis was for. If that's not controversy, I don't know what is. It concerns me, again, when we tend to push huge numbers of agenda items on a consent calendar with an up-and-down vote, especially on something as important as the budget. My concern, as there were concerns inside of this budget analysis, was that we are using one-time funds to create new programs, to fund new positions, and we do not have the money that is going to be able to sustain those. I ask that someone from this council please speak to the fact that we don't need to have items like this on the consent calendar for an up-and-down vote, and that there be healthy discussion and debate from the, from, from the council about issues as an independent budget analysis, which is so critical to what the city does and how we're going to move forward. I also ask that we please tonight, inside of this consent calendar, take some time. If you didn't read the 86-pages or 83-page document, I ask that you do. It asks some very relevant questions about how we're going to move forward financially and physically inside of this city. And there are certain things that need to be answered that I hope the council will take the time to either do tonight or to place back on the agenda so that we can have some discussion publicly about what's happening with the city. Thank you.
Michael?
My name is Michael Voy, and I'm at 600 I Street, District 4. I didn't sign up to speak for item 2, but item 2, I think, is very important because it relates to item 24 ultimately. And so I just wanted to say that I'm in, I'm in support of that. Now, with respect to item 11, I don't have much to say about that either, except that I'm in support of that because I think it provides the source of the data or the database. And I don't know the particulars in that item with respect to retention or utilization of the information that's shared and collected, but I think, based on my prior comments, that at least I know now that I believe that the data is going to be collected initially anyway, to be shared so that people could have the information to vote on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and then, Member Warren, for item 15. The mic's not on.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank city staff, city manager, I think the mayor as well, for agendizing item 15. This is a, some bridge improvements and road alignment that were taking place in District 2. It started, I guess, probably some 20 years ago, and this was one of the unfinished projects that had lingered in District 2, and very happy that we're moving that forward. And so, again, just thank you to city staff and all those that helped to make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. If I just might clarify, because I think Mr. Brazelton made a fair and good comment about the consent calendar, and maybe just explain a little bit of the process. File item 8, which is the Office of the Independent Budget Analyst's full review of the 2017-18 proposed budget, our action under the consent calendar is to receive and file the report. It's not to necessarily agree with all of its contents. Of course, in just a few minutes, we're going to take up the 2017-18 budget, and this information that we will have received, of course, is relevant for the public to comment on, for the council members to comment on. It's another source of information for us to make our decision on the budget. So it's not that we are just burying this. We're receiving it and filing it. It's available to the public. It's available to us, and we're using it in part to consider our decision on the budget. I just wanted to clarify that because I thought you made a, you made a fair point. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comment.
Moved and seconded with the abstention, as noted by the clerk earlier with Councilmember Warren, on file item 2. And so why don't we take every item here? Councilmember Warren, you want to, wait a minute.
Just note...
Just note the abstention. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Very good. The consent calendar passes with that one caveat. We now move to the budget. Welcome. A happy night for our fiscal staff here. This whole... Well, I'll just, I've got to have some comments to make, but I will just say, when you have done as thorough a job as you have done, and in partnership with the council and with the public, the final result might be a little anticlimactic, which is good, right? Because a lot has gone into the final decision here tonight. There may still be public comment, which is fine, or suggestions or questions, but tonight's the finality, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Dawn Holm, the Budget Manager. After seven budget hearings on the FY 17-18 proposed budget, I'm here tonight to ask the council to approve the budget as proposed with the amendments recommended throughout the budget process, which include funding for the mayor and city council priorities, as we discussed on May 23rd, committing the remaining $6.6 million in year-end results from 15-16 for the Affordable Housing, Neighborhood Services, and Beacon Schools initiatives, council, as discussed. Details on these programs will be brought forward over the coming months, and budget allocations will be made at that time. And finally, we've, we are recommending the move of the Economic Development Department to the city manager's office, as well as the Office of Emergency Services to the city manager's office. The report before you includes responses to the various questions you've asked throughout the process. Questions that have not yet been addressed, as listed in the exhibit, will be added to the council follow-up logs so that they are tracked and you can get responses as soon as the departments have been able to fully research and provide a response. I'd like to thank the council, city manager, finance director, department directors and their staff, and especially my budget team for helping us to get to this point. This concludes my presentation. Staff from the departments are, and I are here to answer any remaining questions the council may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Dawn, I want to thank you and your staff in my closing comments, but I will, let's hear first the public comment, and then council members, and then we'll conclude the hearing.
Okay, so we have two members from the public signed up to speak. The first is Rivka Sass, and then Dave Janey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Are you pro-library?
I, I kind of like the library, so I just thought I would come and mention it. My name is Rivka Sass, and I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Public Library Authority, and I know what a process this is. As a resident of the city, as a proud, proud resident of the city, as the director of the library, I know it's been a rough, you know, it's a rough few years for the library, and I just want to thank you, especially thank Laney Milstein and the finance staff for all their hard work to help us work on stability for the library and for all the decisions you've had to make that are helping us get there. So that's all I wanted to say. God bless you, everyone. Thank you. And don't forget to promote summer reading program. We have 17,000 people signed up, and you can help us by putting it in your newsletters. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rivka, for your advocacy and leadership.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, we've got a question. Councilmember Carr?
Rivka.
You have, you have a question here?
I'm sorry. I saw kids. Sorry.
I know we allocated additional funds for the library this year. Will that money be used to revamp MLK Library, which is almost 50 years old?
Thank you for that really excellent question, Councilmember Carr. Unfortunately, we're still operating at a deficit, and we need to gain a little more stability before we can get to a refresh for the Martin Luther King Library. Perhaps Ms. Holm has a secret pot of money somewhere, because, as you know, the library will be 50 years old. Well, it's, it's coming up on its 50th anniversary, but it will be 50 years on April 7th, 2018, that the library was named for Dr. King, just days after his assassination. We would love to see a refresh of that building.
Ms. Holm, did you have a hopeful comment, Ed?
Yeah. And I'm not sure we actually explained this to Rivka, so I apologize. But as we explained during the Capitol Budget Discussion, we actually did allocate Measure U funds to do LED lighting in all the libraries, as well as improvements of all the deferred maintenance at all of the libraries in the city. So we're, we've allocated a few, a couple million dollars for improvements, so.
All right. So we'll look at that.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Any other questions? I'll have to say that?
No. That's very good. Thank you so much. Mr. Janey?
Yes, David Janey is next.
22nd year, ladies and gentlemen, here. Mr. Chan, I beg you, I beg you, sir, find a way to fund those 10 positions that never made it to the budget proposal of the Sacramento Police Department. We can't have the conditions that these men and women are working in, not knowing when they're going to go home, 15-hour shifts. From an officer's safety point of view, that's critical. 911 operators are multitaskers. I don't know if you've visited the 911 center. I've seen them all over this nation. It was part of my career. You start getting into that 12th, 13th, and 14th, and 15th hour, you're not that alert, multitasking individual. You could miss a dot on the screen or that Code 3 cover call. We can't afford to risk the public. We can't afford to risk the people. Mayor, your closing statements on the 16th about the budget said, "We want to share good news about what our officers do." We've been doing that for 18 years on YouTube. We've got some great soundbites of our officers and our compassionate dispatchers, from saving lives to rescuing a cat in a pool. Because Animal Control said a cat's not an animal, and fire wasn't available, but our compassionate officers were dispatched to get that cat out of the pool. Now, of course, it wasn't during bar mania when officers are going call to call to call. And I wish I had more time to talk about cops' grants, over 100 million. I wish I had more time to go through the things that I've talked with the good folks over in management of the budget, looking for money, trying to squeeze money out of this pot or that pot. It's hard. I know the job. But please, Mr. Chan, the communications center needs your help, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Janey. That concludes the public testimony. We have some council member comments, and I'll conclude. Vice Mayor Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start my comments by first, moving the item. And I want to express my gratitude and thanks. Secondly, and then I want to tell why I'm moving the item. I want to thank the entire city staff, from, throughout the entire organization, for their hard work, their dedication, the time that they put on the budget. I believe it takes all of us working with our finance staff to produce this type of blueprint for our city's spending. I especially want to thank our new city manager, Howard Chan. I know this is your first budget as a city manager, and I am thankful that you were at the helm of this budget process. I feel that it is thoughtful and that it has minimized any new ongoing expenses, and I'm really proud of the work that you did in this whole process. I want to now talk about Laney Milstein and her finance staff and her entire team for their impeccable work that not only they, they've done this year, but since I've been on this council, every year that I've been on this council, and as history will tell it, it was long before I got here that you were doing that kind of work. So I just want to thank you personally for the work that you do and your staff does for that. This year, we held community meetings in every single district, and the support from John Silva and the IBA staff, is John here? Where's John? There you go. The support from you and your staff provided to the public and to the council was invaluable. And I just want to thank you, John, because it was work that I felt was well invested in. From a budget standpoint, the highlights that I see in the budget, that it is balanced. The economic uncertainty reserve is at $47.1 million, or 10.1%, which is above the council goal of 10%. Now, some might say barely, but to get to 10% or 10.1% is a great triumph for our city. We are investing one-time monies in projects throughout the city. We are investing in our homeless services. I want to say that again. We are investing in our homeless services. Not only our homeless services, but our youth services, our gang intervention and prevention programs. Our restore, we are restoring funding to the arts. We're prepaying our PERS obligation. I should say that one twice as well. And there's much to be said about our collective efforts, and we should all be proud of the budget that's in front of us tonight. That's not to say that we don't have challenges, because we do. The expiration of Measure U, which I fully support renewing, is coming upon us very soon. CalPERS costs will increase, and supporting and investing in our employees, which is a very important investment to do, and their future contract discussions is something that we have to look at. Our deferred maintenance in our aging infrastructure is also something that is very, something that we have to look at. I am very proud to have this budget and a very modest expenditure for public safety in my district. So I didn't tell you I was going to get to my district, but I am. We are replacing the pods in District 7, which is critical to helping our Sacramento Police Department and our Sacramento Fire Department keep the fine women and men of our city safe, especially in District 7. And I'm particularly thankful to my colleagues for their support of the Sacramento River Bike Trail appropriations. The leaders of our city in 1975, over 40 years ago, had the vision to chart out a plan for the Sacramento River Parkway that included a multi-use trail along the top of the levee in Pocket Greenhaven. The good news is today that through your support, we will be making more progress than we've made in generations. The appropriation sets the stage to double the bike trail, and I am truly grateful for the support and... the support and wish to extend each and every one of you my thanks on behalf of my community. And finally, I want to thank the mayor for his leadership and his vision. We are moving towards a neighborhood-based model of service delivery. We started with the community meetings, and we have a good foundation to build upon. And I am proud to be a part of this transformation where we include the public's and the public's input in every decision that we make. Mayor, this could not be happening without your leadership and your vision, and I thank you. I am proud to support this budget, and I am proud to work with each and every one of my council members. I am humbled and proud servant of District 7, and proud to be on this council at this time with this budget.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for your thoughtful, very thoughtful remarks. Councilmember Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a quick question. The memo prepared by the independent budget analyst in response to the supplemental questions asked for, for by Councilmember Chenier, is that included in this motion?
Sorry?
Not your motion. I'm asking the staff if it's part of the staff's recommendation. Is it included?
We're, we're technically not adopting it. We're adopting the budget and the resolution as proposed. That was a piece of an informational item.
All right. I just want to, since it's going to go on the record because it's in the report, I just need to make one change. So, I'm going to ask you for one modification to your friendly amendment to your motion, and then I'm happy to second it and ditto all that stuff you said, even the District 7 stuff. That was good stuff. All good. This memo, if you have it in front of you, is laid out by category of what the budget priorities were under. And under the Item 3, which is enhancing neighborhood services and citywide economic development, and there are several items that fall under that, including one that I asked for, about community outreach and enhanced services, and it's funding for community initiatives that will serve residents of all ages by expanding engagement. And then there are, one, two, three, four, five, seven sub-bullet points answering Councilmember Chenier's question. The fifth sub-bullet point, might be better to use numbers on this, but the fifth sub-bullet point reads, "Based on the city manager's designation, the selected departments will be responsible for developing and executing contracts to expend the funding." That's fine. But the second sentence in this memo I need to be stricken, and that is, "Contracts that are executed must be for programs and services that align with the Youth Development Strategic Plan that is currently being developed, so will be developed later." And the rationale for that is, first of all, to the extent that this funding would be used for youth programs, it will be going to an existing youth program that, as you know, Mayor, already won the statewide award for Parks Leadership in Youth. And so, while I'm happy to work with the Youth Development Strategic Plan Committee as they put together that plan, this program stands on its own. It's 500 youth in the district who work in the parks and do volunteer work in community leadership, and I don't want to modify that program in order to receive this funding. I will, however, of course, work with that department once it's established on the strategic goals that they have, but I don't want it to be codified in the record because I don't want to make any modifications to the existing program, which is seven years old and stands on its own.
And I'm sure, fair, fair point. Let me, can I make it just a brief suggestion? Just hesitant to legislate from the benches, they say. But if we said that align with the philosophy of the upcoming Youth Development Strategic Plan, that would be, in other words, what you do, what you've done in your district is a model for the Youth Strategic Plan, as long as that's sort of reflected from the deus, as part of the intent, it would allow us to maintain the notion put forward by Councilmember Chenier that we want to make sure essentially that our youth investments are strategic, but if it's, if it's the overall philosophy, would that, would that satisfy you?
Mayor, it feels cart before the horse. You are asking me to take an award-winning, statewide award-winning program and make sure that it complies with a strategic plan that does not yet exist from a department that does not yet exist, which is not a standard that I'm willing to hold myself to. However, if it is critically important, then I'm willing to change the sentence to something like, "We'll coordinate efforts with the Future Youth Development Strategic Plan and Department," that's fine, but I don't want to hold an existing, very successful, statewide award-winning program hostage to a future standard.
Last, last try here, that align, it's okay, that align with and/or coordinate with the Youth Development Strategic Plan, and/or. So, it maintains the alignment, but it also separates that which may not be aligned, but which can coordinate with.
A reason why we can't just strike the line entirely? I mean, I know you're looking at J, but it's District 1. It's a youth program that serves 500 youth per year, is in coordination with the school district. I'm more than happy to use the program as a model to help, but I don't think the reverse is fair, that you take a successful program, you create a new standard, and then you say your successful program now needs to model this new standard. I think if you want your standard to model the existing successful program, that's fine, and I'm happy to work strategically on that effort, but the reverse is not a fair standard to hold my district at too.
Okay, we're just, we're trying to, I'm trying to wordsmith here. Jay?
So, what, what we're trying to do on this, which, it, as an award-winning program, most probably wouldn't affect anything that you're doing, but what we're trying to do is for all programs that we fund, that we run and fund, or that we fund independently, one of the things that the plan will do is set a standard for what those programs should accomplish. It's in line with 20 years of research around youth development, of what young people need to be successful. There are some basics in there around adult youth partnerships and relationships. There are standards in there around safety, around leadership, other things that young people need. Those all, my assumption would be, would be already embedded in your program. What we're trying to do is bring some standards citywide to everything they, they do. If you want to leave it off for this year because of the cart before the horse and make an exception to existing programs, I think that's fine. I would suggest that we also look at, over the course of the year, what, how those programs match up with the standards and the frameworks that we, will be adopted, hopefully by this council.
I'm fine with that, because if there was an existing strategic policy for me to look at, I could see the differentiating items with my program, but I can't do that now.
That's fine. We'll just compare it later and, and that's fine.
So, you're good with striking that sentence? And I guess really my ask is of Rick, because you're the motion maker.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine with striking the, the sentence. I think what I hear you clearly saying is, you have an award-winning program. We can utilize that program to help us develop our program and services, and we should be working back and forth with each other. This prohibits us from doing so strictly because of the wording.
Right.
But we take the wording out, and we can always come back and...
Sure, absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Let me say, what I'm saying is that we should develop standards and a framework that's based on 20 years of research in the youth development field. How programs that currently exist in the city match up with that is something that we'll take a look at, or that our department will take a look at and come back.
Yeah, as Fred said, Councilmember Chenier, the Youth Development Strategic Plan is coming forward, is in progress and is coming forward to the City Council in the near future.
And I think, as Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Jennings has stated, if there's room to improve this program, it's not a sacred entity, I'm happy to come back to it later, but I don't want it to be held hostage to a standard that doesn't yet exist.
I, I don't think the word "holding hostage" on this is really pertinent.
But if nobody has a problem with striking the language, we can move forward. And I have a second, and you're the motion maker, it's fine.
Well, I just also want to point out that we've discussed this at least five different budget, four different budget hearings, that this language has been in there.
Yeah, I've registered my complaints at those moments as well.
Okay. Well, look.
It's fine.
It's fine, Jay, it's fine. And we're all, you look at, we all want the highest quality youth programs that advance youth development. That's what we want in this city, in addition to traditional recreation that's just plain fun for not only kids, but from people of all ages. We're developing these guidelines under the, the leadership of Councilmember Chenier. They're going to come forward to the council very soon, and then we will be able to measure all the investments going forward with those standards, which will be debated and are, and approved, I assume, by the City Council. So, it's fine.
Look forward to that debate in the future. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Chenier, and thank you, Vice Mayor Jennings. Happy to second the budget. Good work on, on all behalf with the modification to strike that sentence. Thank you.
Okay. So, final word here, just to get back to the big picture, and I think Vice Mayor Jennings, in a very articulate way, sort of laid out much of what I would say, and so I won't, I won't repeat it, because he did, he did a very nice job. This is my first budget as well, and budgets are always an imperfect effort to state the community's priorities. And of course, the community's priorities always include fiscal stability. For the greatest ideas in the world are less meaningful or meaningless if you don't have the money to be able to continue them. And so, we did focus this year on one-time investments, and I think that was an appropriate thing to do. We also focused on more extensive community outreach than I think has happened in, in a significant period of time at City Hall, and that is consistent with the direction that I think we all want to go towards, as Vice Mayor said, a more comprehensive, neighborhood-based service approach to how we deliver services and how we relate to our communities and neighborhoods. So, eight meetings out in the community, actually it was nine, because I think Councilmember Harris had two. I know I attended one of them, so, there were nine, and I know I, I attended eight of them myself. Over 400 people attended the forums. We did some significant public polling that is guiding us not only in this budget, but as we begin to think about the renewal of Measure U. I want to thank all the same people again. The city manager, thank you for being a partner, not a adversary, or, or, you know, or somebody quote on the other side. We worked on all this together. And with your excellent finance team, Laney Milstein and Don Holm, thank you. Professional, thorough, and a great product. Our IBA head, John Silva, and Neighborhood Services, who really stepped up during all these community forums, Christina Pallone and your team. And to my, my lead staff member, Scott White here, he deserves a shout-out as well, because he really worked hard to corral a lot of those forums and was of great help to me. And to all my council colleagues, for we do this all together. Here's the deal, I think Rick, Vice Mayor Jennings, sort of laid out the statistic. What did you say, $47 million of, in the Economic Uncertainty Reserve? I know that the fund balances themselves were left with, after the, quote, expenditures, of which are significant, and some great things, River Parkway access, youth programming, district priorities. I mean, stuff that the community wants and that the members themselves have fought for. We still have a $21 million fund balance between Measure U, between Measure U and the general fund. Now, given our long-term projections that show that this surplus we have currently is going to get wiped out by the PERS increases and by other factors, we need that money. And by the way, we're in the midst of collective bargaining negotiations with our police officers, and we want to do right by them, recruitment, retention, and firefighters, and our local 3D, and all our unions are, were up for negotiation, so having that extra is important as well. So, this is a good product, and it is the product of collaboration, which is maybe what is most important. And again, just to end with a little bit of perspective, I've seen and negotiated a lot of budgets, and this one ain't bad. It beats cutting the heck out of things that people really care about, and you all know this too, from your experience on the city council. So, you achieve as much as you can, you stop, you go the next year, you achieve more, you achieve more, and maybe you look back after four or five years and you say, "Look what we invested in together as a city. We have a lot more to do," but I'm proud to support the budget as well. We have a motion and a second as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That passes nine to nothing, as they say in the movie business, "That's a wrap." Thank you. Okay, Councilmember item? Hans, Councilmember, what did I say? Councilmember Hanson?
Do you want to call?
What did I say?
Councilmember item.
Councilmember item. Been a long day. Councilmember Hanson, are you ready with Item 19? Okay, let's call Item 19 then.
Thank you, Mayor. Here.
This is the Central Midtown Restaurant Business Improvement District.
Good. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council. My name is Seeny MaKasini with the Finance Department. The item before you is a public hearing for the proposed formation of the Central Midtown Restaurant Business Improvement District for a five-year term. The proposed restaurant district will encompass all restaurant and food service businesses that exist currently and in the future, within and around the boundaries between the 20th and 24th street blocks between J and K Streets. The Central Midtown Restaurant District will provide services targeted to increase revenues for the restaurants within the focused area, such as events intended to increase restaurant patronage, enhance safety services, increasing security patrols and police presence, along with marketing and promotion, projects such as lighting improvements to provide ambient lighting on trees, ornamental poles, et cetera, with the ideal of improving pedestrian safety. Petitions to form the Central Midtown Restaurant District were submitted to the city, provided by the business owners representing more than 50% of the proposed district assessment. On April 18th of this year, council approved the resolution of intention to establish the Central Midtown Restaurant District. Joint notices of public meeting and public hearing were mailed to known business owners in the proposed district on April 21st. On May 16th of this year, a public meeting was held to allow for the testimony or comments of either the proposed assessment or district itself, and no testimony was heard and no comments were received. At this time, staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing on the proposed formation of the Central Midtown Restaurant Business Improvement District, and so I'm available at this time to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, do we have one speaker? Go ahead.
The speaker is Dave, I believe it says Steinberg.
What?
Yeah.
My brother.
Nether Steinberg. There we are. How are you doing, guys?
Hi.
So, I'm Dave Steinberg. I'm the controller for Lowbrow Beer Garden LLC. You know, one of the main reasons we are in tremendous support of this is we throw some events. One of the hardest things to do as a restaurant is remain relevant, and for us, throwing events is how we do that. We drive culture, we drive foot traffic, and it keeps us fairly relevant and fairly busy. And so, for us, some of the more expensive costs of doing these events are the security, the police, you know, getting, getting the insurance policies paid for, and then, of course, obviously talent, things like that, that we come up with out of pocket. People throw in these events so we can, again, stay relevant and bring customers. You know, by doing this, we do get a lot of foot traffic, and so do our district partners. So, you know, our ask is for you guys to support this and allow us to have this so our customers can help to support what they're already coming to.
Thank you. Yeah, any questions? In support, any, any questions for Mr. Steinberg? I guess not. Okay, thanks a lot for coming, and thanks for investing in Sacramento. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, having been at Second Saturday this weekend, the This Is Midtown concert, several thousand people out there, having a great time, free of charge, making the most of Sacramento is a great example of what Lowbrow and some of those restaurants are doing, and hopefully that this district helps continue. This district is similar to the idea behind the Handle District and the Sutter District, and so, I'm happy to support it. I do know that as a new district, we've been working with restaurateurs, and we have a slight change to the boundaries to be read in the record. So, I will close the public hearing and move the item with this additional language. Through the public outreach process of forming the Central Midtown Restaurant Bid, programming services have been condensed and focused to this, focused to services on the two main clusters of restaurants near 20th and K and 24th and K. The restaurants east of 20th on J Street will not benefit from the services provided with this focused approach and should be excluded from the district. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney? The restaurants east of 20th on J Street will not benefit from the services provided with this focused approach and should be excluded from the district. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
That's consistent with state law. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, and with that, I'll, that's the motion.
That item has been moved and seconded with that clarification. No further public testimony, no further council comments. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That measure passes on a nine to nothing vote. Let me just state for the record, as I understand it, file items 21 and 22 are being continued.
Yes, that is correct.
Is that correct?
For one week, to the 20th. Yes.
To the 20th. Very good. So now we'll move to item 20, which is the Business Improvement Area Annual Report for four different, five different council districts.
Hey, I'm back. That was a quick second. The item before you is the public hearing to approve the annual reports and levy assessments for the fiscal year 2018 for each of the following business improvement areas, also known as the BIAs. We have the Del Paso Boulevard BIA, the Downtown Plaza BIA, Franklin Boulevard BIA, Old Sacramento BIA, and the Stockton Boulevard BIA District. On May 23rd of this year, council adopted the resolutions of intention for the BIA, setting today's date of June 13th as a date for the public hearing. At this time, staff recommendation is to open the public hearing. Upon the close of the public hearing, after all testimony and written protests, if any have been received, staff will determine if a majority protest exists based on the written protests submitted to the city clerk in compliant form and read into the record by the city clerk. If a majority protest does not exist, staff recommends adopting the five resolutions contained in the report. Thank you.
We have no public comment. This is, again, an annual report, essentially is a chance for us to review the financials of the business improvement districts. Councilmember Bagueta has a comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank staff and also all of the folks from the Business Improvement Districts, I see Frank Louie, Bill Norton, Nathan over there, and I thought I saw Tracy Shaw out here from the Power and Alliance. Wanted to, one, just commend them for all their work, also all the staff's work on great assets for the city. Not only are they representatives for the property owners there, but they've been engaged in a lot of the workforce development and thoughts aspect, and bringing more life into our old commercial boulevards. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the public hearing and move the resolutions.
Second. Moved and seconded, no public testimony, no further public comment. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Nine to nothing. So again, file items 21 and 22 are continued. That takes us to file item 23, which is an alley closure. Who's presenting on this?
Tom Adams, I believe. Here he comes.
Mr. Adams.
Mr. Mayor, move that we waive the presentation, close the public hearing, and move the item.
Second. We have no one signed up to speak.
And no one signed up, but hey.
I wanted to come up and say, "How you doing, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members of Madam Clerk?"
Well, take a second, come on.
It's good to see you this evening. It's great to see you this evening.
Anything you want to add that, not in the report? Something about, you know, your philosophy of alley closures, or?
Yeah. The item I have before you this evening is the temporary closure of the alley bounded by 15th and 16th Street, Chinatown Alley, C and D Streets. The property owners there reached out to the Public Works Department in regards to some issues that they were having within the alley, which were some types of transient activity, gang graffiti, burglary, of the such, and some issues with trespassing. This particular alley, the property owners would like to put a electronic gate near the 15th Street entrance, and the 16th Street entrance will have a manual-style gate. There's 11 adjacent properties. I've received support from all, no objections. The police, fire, and transportation engineering departments, along with staff and public works, support this request.
No controversy.
And nothing's there.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Appreciate it.
Excellent. It's been moved and with a brief presentation. And the second.
You too, by the way. You too.
Call the question.
Call the question. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? It's, Councilmember Chenere is, I don't know, we should give him the opportunity to add on. I don't know if that's, is that the way we do it? I mean, I always like leave the roll open so the member can add on if they have to step away, so we'll do that. We'll do that.
There he is.
There he is. Councilmember on item, on item.
Closure of the alley.
Closure of the alley. Aye, that's nine to nothing. Okay, very good.
All right, have a nice evening.
Okay, thanks a lot, Mr. Adams. Okay, we get to the final item of the evening. Maybe aside from the budget, our most significant item of the evening, and that is the Whole Person Care Program and Related Implementation Activities. I welcome and thank, once again, Emily Halken, our Homeless Services Coordinator, who's done a Herculean job putting all this together. I know I'm grateful. Toro Sanchez, Jacob Vitell, the same. And we await your presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Emily Halken, your Homeless Services Coordinator. As you may recall, at our February 21st workshop on homeless housing solutions, the council really envisioned creating a system that included prevention, outreach, services, and housing that over three years would aim to move 2,000 people out of homelessness and prevent another 2,000 people from becoming homeless. The focus of the workshop in February really was on the upcoming approvals of 1,700 new housing opportunities that were going to be allocated via SHRA. But in the context of the conversation, we recognized that housing alone was not going to meet the needs of the most vulnerable people on our streets, and we started to lay out a framework to also try to fund wraparound services. Literally that same day, while we were working on a plan to compile funding to create these services, the mayor shared that he had been approached by the State Department of Healthcare Services to invite the city to apply for the Whole Person Care waiver program as one way to potentially fund these services. At the time, we had just about a week, actually exactly a week, to get an application onto the desk of the state, and we were extremely lucky to have the support of WellSpace Health, who at the time did a tremendous amount of heavy lifting to ensure that the city had a seat at the table and an opportunity to compete for these funds. Since the March 1st state application deadline, we've been working tirelessly on revising the application. We broadened the scope to include many, many more community partners at the table. We worked to align our scope to the city's vision for housing homeless populations, and we did a lot of work to meet some technical requirements related to the funding, data, metrics, governance, to really ensure that, would we be funded, we could be successful at standing up a project like this. With the tremendous support of many community partners, some of whom are here today, I am very proud to say that we did get our application in, and we were notified formally yesterday that we have been awarded a Whole Person Care pilot equalling approximately $64 million over four years. This was a big lift, but the real work starts now, should the council accept the award and authorize a city manager to begin implementation tonight. So what is Whole Person Care? Whole Person Care is a statewide pilot program that's administered in California by the State Department of Healthcare Services under the federal authority of the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, or CMS. The pilot is authorized under a Medi-Cal waiver program, which allows the state to access up to $1.5 billion in federal funds over five years to match dollar-for-dollar local funding. The program allows communities to create programs that coordinate health, behavioral health, and social services for vulnerable Medi-Cal patients, really in an effort to do two things, improve the long-term health of those constituents, but also to create purposeful collaborations amongst service providers who are already supporting these patients. Whole Person Care allows communities to draw down federal funding to fund supportive services that otherwise would not be Medi-Cal eligible, really in an effort to support the holistic care of the patient and the community. And while Whole Person Care implementations differ greatly from community to community, in general, the programs are characterized by these six general dimensions shown. At the state level, Whole Person Care was designed and intended to be a county-led initiative in that in California, counties provide public health, they provide behavioral health, and substance abuse services to Medi-Cal patients. So as the city began to think of through our application, we knew inherently that a city-led initiative would be very different. And so we envisioned a program that partnered with our community-based health programs to provide services to frequent users, aligning them with housing resources through our homeless continuum of care, through some local-funded housing initiatives, as well as the newly-realigned SHRA housing programs. And in this way, we look to leverage our Whole Person Care dollars to support and expand upon a system that would be designed to reach the most vulnerable folks in our community, including those currently homeless and those at imminent risk of homelessness. So in very broad terms, our Whole Person Care program can be described as four components. First, outreach. We currently have navigators or outreach workers that work in some of these spaces in our communities. They're in emergency rooms, they're with our impact team, but oftentimes, the work they do is siloed off. The Whole Person Care program will look to combine the efforts of these different organizations, and it both expand the number of places that they are found, the touchpoints, and also the quantity of navigators. Second, in order to target the most vulnerable, the frequent users of the emergency rooms, we need integrated data between our healthcare organizations, our crisis intervention services, and our housing providers, and Whole Person Care will provide the opportunity to create that system. Third, comprehensive care coordination, that's the terminology Whole Person Care uses. You and I might call that case management, which really is the array of services that help an individual secure the specific supports that they need, tailored to that person's unique needs and opportunities. And then finally, ongoing housing support to help clients find and sustain housing, including some support to do housing search, landlord relationships, payment of deposits, et cetera. While the city's goals with Whole Person Care are intrinsically aligned with some broader efforts to prevent and end homelessness, we do recognize that Whole Person Care alone will not be able to serve everybody in need on our streets. Rather, we see Whole Person Care as part of a larger system. To that end, the city's approach will align with our forthcoming homeless point-in-time count to try to address the most vulnerable, unsheltered folks on our streets. Secondly, we are committed to integrating this program with not only existing city funds and city programs, but those administered by the county, SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward. And finally, we see Whole Person Care as an opportunity to catalyze funding and programs throughout the community to increase the capacity of our overall system and to create a robust system of care. So while Whole Person Care will not serve everyone experiencing homelessness in Sacramento, it is designed to complement and augment the existing systems. Today, there's generally just one path for people experiencing homelessness to access housing and services, and that's via the Sacramento Steps Forward community queue. Whole Person Care will create a second pathway for some of our most vulnerable, difficult-to-serve folks, and surrounding them with an intensive array of services. So, we did this back in February, I've sort of redrawn it to fit in Whole Person Care. Today, we have people in need who today must sort of be found by the system. In other words, a navigator must encounter you, or you must have an interaction with the impact team, or something like that. With the introduction of Whole Person Care, we'll be able to have outreach that is reactive, like we have today, where a navigator comes across an encampment, but also proactive, where we can actively identify frequent users, people who are sick, people who are in need, using the hospitals, shelters, or other services, and reach out to them. And as is today, many people may only require a light touch and referral to community services. But with the increased outreach and reach touchpoints, we do anticipate that we'll be able to assess 6,800 people over three years for services, and this is both health services and housing services combined in the same place. For those who are Whole Person Care eligible, which we estimate to be over the course of the program, 3,250 people, all of them will be provided care coordination or case management services that are aligned to their specific individual needs and circumstances, including, at this point, referrals to county mental health and substance abuse services. Many of them, for the Whole Person Care clients who are not literally homeless but imminently at risk of homelessness, they will receive ongoing care management as a form of prevention to ensure that they don't fall into the homeless system of care. And for those who are literally homeless, which we estimate to be about 1,600 folks, there will be additional access to intensive housing supportive services and a variety of housing programs at the back end to help them maintain and sustain their housing. While Whole Person Care cannot pay for expansion.
Question of clarity, because I know in the physical chart that we have that doesn't quite show up here, just to the right of the housing, what are the estimated number of discrete subsidized housing units that we could have available to us to provide that permanent housing piece of Whole Person Care?
I think it's in the next slide, I believe it's 2,300.
Oh, it's the next slide.
It is. It's okay, you're foreshadowing. I think of the subsidized units, I think it's 2,300. We'll get there in a second. So while Whole Person Care cannot pay for the expansion of our shelter systems, we cannot use Whole Person Care to pay for operations of shelter beds. There is the ability to add some medical respite beds, and as our community expands shelter opportunities through other investments and other programs, we believe Whole Person Care can be there to provide some services in our shelters to ensure that those stays are shorter and that they lead to permanent housing. And then finally, for those people who aren't Whole Person Care eligible, because again, this is not going to be a program for everybody, they will be referred into the existing community queue that Sacramento Steps Forward operates. There you go, it is 2,300. So with Whole Person Care integrated into our larger system of care, we anticipate seeing an increase in outreach capacity by two to three times of what we see today. This is combining health and housing assessments in one place and under one umbrella, and we'll also be expanding the locations where we'll have outreach capabilities, both on the street and physically. Currently, Sacramento Steps Forward navigators carry a caseload of anywhere up to 100 people, depending on the person and where they're working in and the time of the year. Whole Person Care coordinators will maintain caseloads of no more than 1 to 25, which will ensure the ability to provide rapid follow-up and intensive ongoing services in a way that today our system can't handle. And finally, to the mayor's point, Whole Person Care provides housing supportive services to help people find and maintain housing, whether that be a market unit without much financial support, or whether it be one of the intensively subsidized housing units, which we estimate to be about 2,300 over the course of three years, through a variety of programs. So over the course of the four-year pilot, the Sacramento Whole Person Care will provide an array of services as follows. Going back through where we just hit, about 23,000 outreach touches to hit 6,800 people. We recognize that many people who are sick and on our streets today will require many more than one interaction to engage, and we've factored that into our estimations. Of the 6,800 people we estimate touching our outreach program, we expect 3,200 will be eligible and interested in receiving Whole Person Care services. Those who aren't eligible will still get light-touch services or other referrals. These 3,200 people will be those folks we enroll in care coordination, and of those, we estimate about half will be homeless or at imminent risk, and so therefore be eligible for the intensive housing support. And then finally, Whole Person Care will allow us to increase capacity in one of our existing programs in our community, the interim care program, which is respite beds for people exiting acute treatment in the hospitals, but who need a place to recover.
What's that?
It's 144, I'm sorry, the color is very bad, isn't it? I'll get you a printed copy. In addition to the on-the-ground services provided to people in need, Whole Person Care provides a really great opportunity for our community to create some new systems, a lot of it around data and metrics that can benefit the broader system and really, we think, can live on beyond this pilot, which ends, it's a five-year pilot. With these data resources that we will be building and standing up in Whole Person Care, we'll be responsible for three layers of data compliance to the state. First, we have to ensure that services are provided to the number of Medi-Cal patients that we've identified, in this case, the 3,200. that we've identified, in this case, the 3,200. Second, we have to report on program delivery and patient services. We will be able to incentivize partners, some of our healthcare partners, to provide data and to help us build the system of care. And then third, we have to meet some predetermined health and housing outcomes, such as reduction in ER visits, increased access to housing supportive services. So how do we fund this? The size of a whole-person care program is limited essentially by two factors. The annual funding max by the state, which we have not hit, but also the amount of non-federal funding that the locality can commit to the project via what's called an intergovernmental transfer, or IGT. In Sacramento, our maximum transfer for a full program year is just over $8 million, meaning that the total annual program budget is $16 million. For every dollar we transmit to the state, they transmit back our original dollar plus a new federal dollar to match it. And there are some nuances with program years, which we'll go over in a second. The city arrived at our funding amount really through the hard work and dedication of a lot of healthcare partners. Many of our healthcare providers, all four health systems, as a matter of fact, are already funding activities that would be whole-person care eligible. They're funding some respite beds, they're funding street nurses, they're doing a lot of these activities, but they're doing it on one-off contracts. What they have committed to doing is instead of funding contracts individually, funneling their existing funds through the city's whole-person care program so that we can, as a community, double this investment and double the impact and better coordinate our individual efforts. So there are three main sources of funds feeding into our overall program. Some existing city contracts that we already administer for homeless services and programs, a small additional increase from your city, the one-time housing set-asides, and then 80% of the funds are actually coming from outside partnerships, this is a true public-private partnership, from contracts that our four health systems already contribute to the community. And by realigning the contracts, both city contracts and partner contracts, we are able to double the impact of the investments in the community and better align all of our The funding process for whole-person care is via what I called just a minute ago the intergovernmental transfer, or IGT. Essentially, IGTs are transfers of public funds between governmental entities and are often used in Medicaid programs. This diagram shows the general overview of how it works in terms of flow of funds. For the whole-person care program, the city will be acting as the fiscal agent and will have a contractual obligation to the state to transmit this IGT at the start of every program year. Funds transferred via the IGT must be non-federal and public, in that the entities transferring the funds are all public. It has to be transferred via the city. Our nonprofit partners could not directly apply or administer this program. The city's contribution of the dollars must be matched by federal funds, I'm sorry, the city's contribution of dollars to be matched by the federal funds include our general funds as well as contributions from the healthcare system. So we will be receiving non-federal match from our funding partners. The city will then transfer those funds to the state via the intergovernmental transfer. The state will transfer it to the federal government, that's CMS. They will match it, funnel it back to the city, and we will use the net dollars to operate the Sacramento whole-person care program. So, the program and funding all comes together over the course of five program years contained in four calendar years, and this is where it gets kind of confusing, so please stop me. At the end of every program year, and this is what the state defines as a program year, the city will be responsible for meeting program year deliverables and transferring the funds associated with that prior program year expenses. However, the program is set up such that, if properly managed, the funding from each prior program year pays for services to be delivered in the current year, such that there should not be any impact in the general fund beyond those dollars that you've already committed to this program. So we are currently, and I apologize if these colors do not show up well, we are currently in program year one, which in the state world runs from January 1st of this year to June 30th of this year, so it's really a six-month program year. The program year deliverable for this year is only submittal of a successful application, which we officially did yesterday. So, at the beginning of program year two, which is around July of this year, we will make our first transmittal to the state of $4 million, receive our funds back plus the match, which will fund the deliverables for program year two. Program year two runs for the last six months of this year, July 1st to December 31st, and program year two activities consist almost entirely of program planning and setup. So again, at the completion of program year two, which will be around January of 2018, we will make our second transfer for successfully standing up the program, setting up contracts, establishing data committees, et cetera, et cetera. And we will draw down our second IGT of about $8 million. Program years three through five, which are calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, are really the heart of service delivery. So starting around January of 2018, the city will be responsible for annually serving clients and meeting our metrics to the state, and at the completion of each of those years, we'll make a subsequent drawdown of the IGT. So, to wrap up, from the time the mayor got the call from the state asking us to apply, we've been working under a very condensed timeline. And the next six months, program year two, from the state's perspective, are critical to getting whole-person care program off the ground and delivering services to the vulnerable folks in our community. As I said earlier, applications were due to the state in March, but we really worked with the state staff all the way to almost the end of May on completing the application, which was then forwarded to the federal government. As I said, we received final approval of our application in writing yesterday, and with tonight's council approval, Howard, we'll be able to sign the contract by the state deadline of January 22nd. Program year two begins on July 1st, and shortly after that, we will make our first IGT transfer to the state. And from July to December, we will be working earnestly with our partners to stand up the program in preparation for the start of program year three in January of 2018 and delivery of services. Tonight's actions, which include budgetary transfers to set up the program and allow us to transfer the IGT, and authority for the city manager to enter into a contract with the state to administer the program, will allow us to begin a lot of the work that is program year two. But over the next few months, we will be coming back to council with a series of actions, hopefully in this order. We will be coming back to you with contracts for our funding partners, our healthcare partners, to access the money that they have made available for this program. We will also be looking to contract with a consulting firm to provide ongoing daily program oversight. This firm will be responsible to a city program director and a city lead steering committee, but the consultant staff will have healthcare system expertise to guide the city in its daily tasks and oversights of running a successful Medi-Cal program. And simultaneous with finding a consulting partner, we will begin to form governance committees with our service and healthcare partners and start looking to issue RFPs to fund the downstream service providers and returning to you with those contracts. All of these steps will likely require returns to council numerous times over the next few months. We will also be establishing ways for the community to interface and engage with this program via a portal on the webpage and some other opportunities. I look forward to sharing with you and the community our progress in standing this program up, and I'm really excited for the opportunity to expand services and opportunities to make a significant impact on homelessness in our community and to improve the lives of so many. With that, I'm going to stop and see if there's any questions or any additional comments.
Outstanding presentation, consistent with the outstanding work that went into the development of this application. Thank you. So I've got a number of members that are on the speaker queue. Do the members mind if we take the public testimony first? Or if anyone has clarity questions on the specifics, maybe you want to do that before the public testimony? Why don't you go ahead, Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief, Emily. I just wanted to try to understand how we tie the funds to ultimately, you know, we recognize we need more housing units, and so, and this is a lot of money, it's fantastic, I think. Mr. Mayor, thank you for that, a lot of money. How do we, or is there a path to translating any of these funds directly to more units? I know a lot is supportive services and all of those things, but does it have a direct interaction or ability to help us produce more units?
Maybe not directly. So whole-person care funds cannot be used to pay ongoing rent subsidies, so we can't use it to develop housing units, and we can't use it to pay ongoing rent subsidies. However, it can support other rental programs, either built units or subsidized voucher-type units, both with the wraparound services, but we can pay for some one-time costs. So for example, we can use whole-person care to pay your rent deposit, to pay a damage fund, should there be any issues at the backend. But what I'm hopeful for is it will free up access to existing housing resources that but for the services are difficult to get a homeless person into.
So you said, you mentioned existing units, and how would it work with an existing, say, an apartment building that either is already affordable or being converted to affordable, or homeless, excuse me, for the homeless?
Right. So if the building was, if the physical structure was being explicitly set aside for whole-person care clients, then we could use the whole-person care process, the identification of people, the outreach, the engagement, to provide the supportive services for those folks. Alternatively, the people could go find a unit in the open market, whether it be all-in-one apartment or scattered throughout the community. The services they receive will be the same regardless of where they're living. If they're all living in one place, then perhaps there's some little economies of scale, but you'll receive the same services regardless of the physical location of where you live.
Okay, but not for, say, acquisition or building or...
None of the capital cost, right.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for the clarity with Councilmember Warren and Emily Halcon. Okay, let's take the public testimony, and then we'll go back to the city council.
Okay, so there's nine or 10 that have signed up to speak. We'll start with Michael Voi, and then Mike, I believe it's Jasky, and then Fago, and then Robert Copeland.
Good evening again. Congratulations, Mayor. This particular item I support wholeheartedly. I think it's a tremendous program, and on reflection, it's very important, I think, the timing piece, that this is something that needs to be, or it's very good that if it's in place, or is at least coming online when the consideration for Councilman Warren's proposal comes forward, that there's actually this whole-person support, because then there's somewhere for these people to go, and that was always one of the questions. If you opened up the tent shelter and there's no place for people to go, or there's no program on the backend, then you're kind of bogged down. So I do support it, I think it's a good thing on the front end, and I think it ties into, like I mentioned earlier, item two on the consent calendar, that making, allowing for smaller units, that's going to help the economics, and that maybe addresses some of Councilman Warren's, or will help with that concern about, do we get, where do we get more units from? Because you will need, perhaps you will need more units somewhere for the people to go. So with that, I just say thank you, and may everyone who is involved with this program be successful, whatever their role is.
Thank you very much.
Mike?
Sorry, I didn't get that.
I got it, all right, sorry. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of city council. My name is Mike Jasky, and I'm representing Sacramento area congregations together tonight, which you know has congregations throughout the city and county, and I personally reside in District 6. We support the city's effort to acquire the whole-person care funds. We're pleased the city took the initiative to secure this funding source. We request that as specific programs are designed, that they be coordinated with the existing HUD Fund and Continuum of Care programs and the expanding set of programs that the county is debating today and tomorrow. We are concerned that there not be three parallel and independent homeless care programs. I spent six hours at the county hearing today. I did not hear a single word about whole-person care, about City of Sacramento programs, and we are worried. Ms. Halcon's presentation certainly expresses an intent that that might be the case, but I think we need some leadership here. So, partly, the answer to that potential problem is the need for an actual plan to end homelessness. This is a wonderful programmatic opportunity. It will help a good number of people. The expanded programs that the county has will do the same. We have the base of the continuum of care programs, but how do they fit together? So we need, you need, the supervisors need, the continuum of care needs to understand what the scale of our homelessness problem is, what existing programs can be expected to accomplish, what more is needed, how many more measures are needed, what they're going to cost, and how long they're going to take.
Thank you, Mr. Jasky.
So we urge you to pull together with Steps Forward, the county, and all of the other players to actually develop a comprehensive plan.
Advice, well stated. Thank you, sir.
Fago? Did Fago leave? Okay, Robert Copeland, and then Victor Brazelton, and Frank Topping.
For once, I have to congratulate the city council and Mayor Steinberg. I think this is a great ideal.
Record the moment.
You won't hear me say that much here. But I think if you have this combined with, say, the No Place Like Home Act or any other state program, when it comes online in the future, let's go for it. The no, this program right here, I think it's going to save city and Sacramento money, because a lot of less people will be going to hospitals or to the county jail. You ought to think about that, too. Because if they got a place to stay that's safe, they won't get, they won't less likely go to the hospital because of elements like heat stroke, or getting stabbed, or whatever, or... I think this is a great ideal. For once, I salute the city council, thank you.
Victor?
Thank you again for allowing me to speak. One, thank you. I think the fact that the county did not apply for this and the city stepped up to be able to move to this measure shows a great step forward to where we need to be, so I definitely appreciate it. As someone who needs healthcare and didn't always have the ability to it with a heart condition, this is something that led me, in my own personal journey, to become homeless. And I appreciate the fact that there were a multitude of people who contributed to make sure that healthcare for folks who are homeless is available, and it's going to be something that allows for them to work. What I do hope that we do to continue to move a part of this and to continue to wrap around these services is looking at not only just the symptoms of healthcare, but what's at the core of this. And I appreciate the fact that there are going to be units that are going to be subsidized which allow to come through. which allow to come through. But I appreciate tonight that the city stepped up and took the ability to be able to have health care for folks who are on home. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Following Frank is Wanda, and then Richard Abruzzi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Being part of the Sacramento County Human Services Coordinating Council, I was asked to serve on the Office of Emergency Services, Access and Functional Needs Coordination Advisory Group, basically those that take a look at the needs for evacuating our most vulnerable populations. We also took a look at items such as the cooling centers and warming centers as needed across the county. Liked you to pay attention to the fact that the weather report is calling for over 100 degrees here many times in the next two weeks. And what I'd like to point out is that I'm really enthusiastic about the money that you have gone ahead and attained through the whole person care. It is long-term permanent supportive housing, but in the meantime, in the most immediate need, the type of project, it was modeled after Quixote Village in Olympia, Washington, that Professor Steve Waters is proposing, the First Step Communities would be a fantastic addition. I'm not sure where we stand with Councilmember Warren's proposal, but we need something immediate. Any way you can see your way clear, that's the best recommendation.
Excellent, Mr. Topping.
Wanda?
Well, I think you guys have got it. Thank you. This is a very good beginning, but I am concerned still for the immediate care of 13,000 people. And with this, I know that you guys do, indeed do care about our homeless population. You work very hard. I realize that sometimes deadlines get passed, and sometimes we have to wait to get the whole amount. So thank you very much. Again, we really need to start working on immediate care, but you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for being upset earlier.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next is Richard Abruzzi, and then Ryan Luthborough.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Just wanted to stand in support of your vote for whole person care. As a service provider and a constituent of District Four, this is really an opportunity for the city to take lead and charge of the issues that surround us. I know that I speak for a lot of service providers as I stand here tonight and say that this is a difficult task, but one that we are ready to stand up to. And with the talent that you have in the city staff, we are ready to work together to do so. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it.
Hey, Ryan. This is our last speaker.
Good evening, Ryan.
Mayor Steinberg, member of council. Good evening. First, I want to start by thanking you, Mayor, for being such a champion on this issue, and for all of you embracing this. I'll tell you, there was not that long ago when it was difficult to get elected officials of any local government to really take a watchful eye on issues of homelessness. And today, we have both county and city being very thoughtful, not just being thoughtful, taking risk and bringing in large sums of dollars to truly address this issue. As the person that's the CEO for Sacramento Steps Forward, Lead Agency for Continuum of Care, I know firsthand the complexity of putting together a system to address issues of homelessness. Emily has been with us every step of the way, and as we started out in 2011, she gave me a word of caution, "Don't put too many outreach out there first before you get the housing units in place." And I would, I would offer you the same suggestion. But I am so excited to reimagine what it is that we do to address homelessness in our community and to work in partnership with you and all of those that are currently addressing issues of homelessness. I think we have a true opportunity. In the last year, we had just over 7,600 households come into our system throughout the county experiencing homelessness, and the good news there is that over 2,230 households were housed. Of those 1,400 were assisted and found housing that wasn't subsidized. So when you see in that chart, prevention and diversion, those are really important moments. We can have some big wins in those areas. We had another 438 through rapid rehousing, and yet another 309 for permanent supportive housing. I think there's times when we kind of doubt, can we house large numbers? We can. And I think even the work we're doing currently shows that, and I look forward to the ongoing work we're going to do together. Thank you so much.
Ryan, thank you for being on the front lines for so long, your dedication, your skill, and you're showing us the pathway to, to bring to capacity what we already know works. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
That is the public testimony. Now let's go to the members of the City Council, begin with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since Steve backed off a little bit, I would like to move staffer recommendation on all, all the aspects of it, because this is a very exciting moment. I, too, want to thank you, Emily. I can tell you, having dived rather deep into the homelessness conundrum because of the homeless population in District Three, I've relied on you heavily for the last two years for advice and to commiserate and to think about what is possible in the future. So now we have this tremendous opportunity, and we're going to have to think about building a system. And there's a lot to do there, to understand how to fully use these funds within the constraints that they're, they're under. But this is a real game changer. This, this is a very significant moment in Sacramento. Never before in the history of this city have we had these kind of resources available to, to work with the homeless population. So I'm very excited about this. I'm certainly thinking about all the components that it will take. I think a lot about the housing component, because that's going to be a choke point. We have options there, you know, with the Housing Choice vouchers. We have different ideas that have come to pass, from tiny homes to micropads. We're going to find a way to make this work, but this kind of impetus is very rare, is very rare indeed. And so, Mayor, again, I thanked you earlier in front of cameras for, for doing what you do, but this is really pretty remarkable, and it offers us an opportunity that, again, is unprecedented. And I'm really looking forward to working with all of these incredible people in the city who really can get it done. I understand the, the immediate needs of the people on the street. I think that some of you think we don't think about that, we don't work towards it. In fact, we do. And as Ryan just pointed out, we have helped a couple thousand people resolve their issues and get into housing solutions. But the fact of the matter is, there are more people to help. You know, we're not going to stop. We're not going to relent. We're, we're doing the due. It's just, you don't see it that much on the street yet, but I think that with the whole person care grant, we have the ability to move forward at a much quicker pace, and I'm very excited about that. To the gentlemen from area congregations together, I agree with you completely that we don't, we don't want to fragment different programs and take pieces and work independently of the county. We've been doing the homeless two-by-two, county-city homeless two-by-two for the last year and a half, and we have made headway, and we've had some losses as well, but my own opinion is that to be fully successful, we are going to have to walk hand-in-hand with the county. We're interrelated. They have money for certain services, and now we have money for certain services, and we'll find a way to work together. That, that progress has seemingly, you know, hit, hit a stutter, but we'll get there because we have to. And it's in the best interest, not only of the city and the county, but the region, that we forge those connections again. And there are so many people applying their mental resources and financial resources to this problem that I feel very optimistic about an outcome in the next few years that will be extremely positive for our region. So again, thank, thank you so much, Emily and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, of course, great news. Congratulations, Mayor. I have said this a few times. It's funny, you, you asked me one time, would I have done this if I were you? Would I have applied for this? And my answer to you was, we wouldn't have had the opportunity, because I wouldn't have gotten the call. We got this call because of you, because of the connections you had at the state, and so we have this opportunity to do something really different and spectacular. And I think we have the right team in place, the right council, the right city manager, and the right mayor to give it, give it a real try. And if it's possible for cities to implement this type of program, then we will be successful, because I think we can. And I think you have a really good strategy for how to move forward, and I want to be supportive in that. I have a couple of questions just about what our next steps are, and then a couple of statements, and then a picture I'd like to put up with the permission of Councilmember Hanson, because it, and he knows what it is, and the mayor. First of all, just, Emily, really quick, what is the next step? So it comes back to council one more time, or, we're going to vote tonight, and, but then what happened, what is the next thing that will happen? Well, so immediately, the, probably the most immediate next step is we'll be hiring a consulting firm to, to provide a lot of staffing support. That RFQ is actually out on the ground right now. Great. So that will probably be the first thing you'll see back, is that contract, but then in the next months, you'll also start seeing the downstream contracts for our selected service providers. Great, so we'll have these service providers, and that'll be like the data collection and the contract management and administration pieces, so, that we, that makes sure we're successful with the components of this that are different for us as a city dealing with the state. Perfect. And then, I don't know if, maybe the mayor's the right one to talk about this, just because this is a purely positive night, and everything that's happening around this item is positive, and I want to make sure we walk away with that sentiment. So maybe you could talk for just a minute about the match, because I know that there have been folks in the county that have said the reason they didn't do this is because of the match.
Yes.
And I think, Mayor, you have done a very good job of aligning the priorities of the effort around reducing impacts on emergency rooms and hospitals in the region, to then bring on really important partners that are going to allow us to be successful. So maybe you could talk to that.
I, if you would like me to now, I'm happy to do so. If you don't mind, maybe I'll wait, wait for my comments. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure that you do, that, that that happens, because the differration, the differentiation here between the county not doing it and us doing it, is that on the front end, you all worked very hard to make sure we would have partners in place, and set aside money in the budget, too, for this first year. And I think that needs to be, from just a technical standpoint, very clearly understood, because I don't want to see a media outlet or something making it seem like the burden is too great. It's really not, because it's being shouldered by a significant number of partner agencies.
The question you're raising, if I just for a minute to write back to you, is about the risk.
Yes.
And there's a lot of talk, and I do, I do plan to address that in my comments, because I think it's a very important question for the taxpayers.
Yeah.
It's a very important question for the council, and it's clarity that needs to be articulated, and I will.
Because in the risk-benefit analysis of this, the benefit is so great that we did step out a little bit on the risk side, maybe farther than some of our regional partners were willing to. But I think in doing so, we brought along a different kind of public-private partnership that has helped us bring that risk factor way down. And I just want to make sure that people watching this tonight walk away understanding that, that, that we have done our due diligence and our homework here on the front end to make sure that that doesn't turn into a problem for the city. And then, just two items, I, and I said this earlier today at your press conference, Mayor, but for me, what's exciting about this is our first responders and how we can help them, because police and fire end up in these very precarious situations, and I'm going to give you an example in just a minute that just happened to, I happened to be involved with earlier today. And we don't give them any tools for dealing with mental health, or, you know, a lot of the issues that they come across, I don't know how, what they're supposed to do. I don't know how they're supposed to be successful in those scenarios. So this really is going to allow us to do some very creative things. I know we've talked, Mayor, a lot about mental health clinicians, behavioral health people, community people on ambulances with the firefighters in their, you know, mobile integrated healthcare system, and I think that's fantastic. Can't wait to see some pilots on that. I really think that will have a huge impact. We already have our impact teams with the police department, but this could be a way to bring on more social workers and really free the police up to do the thing that they're brought here to do, and give them resources to be successful on the scene of a really difficult situation. That being said, Councilmember Hanson, are you okay with me sharing this story? Would that be all right? Okay. Now, would you put this up on the thing? Shirley, if you can zoom in, earlier today, I took a late lunch today, we had a lot of meetings, and if you could zoom in, Shirley, on the statue portion, yeah, that's good. Hopefully you guys can see, you might have to zoom out just a little bit. I went to the new taqueria across the street with one of my staff members, Brandon Black, and the park was fairly empty, and the restaurant was winding down for the day because it was almost 3:00. And out at that, that's Caesar Chavez Plaza, right across the street, and out in that fountain, all by herself, was a completely stripped-down naked 50-year-old woman in the, in the fountain, crying. And she managed to, while I, I called the police to come out and help and fire, as you can see, and while I was on the phone with them, she managed, and I don't know how, to climb that podium, and the water was on. And that's her covered in a black blanket there that you can kind of see between those two firefighters. She was stuck, and she was clinging to the statue there and crying and screaming that she wanted to go home, but non-responsive to anyone that was trying to talk to her. Officer Michelle Lazar was the first one there, part of our impact team, with a social worker with her. They were fantastic. I mean, she knew her. She knew her first name. She already knew her. She tried so hard to comfort her. And then, the next four officers to arrive were also women, and they tried as hard as they could to get her covered up. There were dozens of men out there filming her, taking pictures, and the officers were great about trying to convince people not to do that nicely, and they were so kind and so compassionate. And, and they were a bit helpless without the firefighters, and we called and called for the firefighters, but you know, I found out that they were on another similar call. There were four calls like this, similar to this, before 3:00 today in downtown. And when the fire guys came, they were able to get out some ladders and climb up there, and that guy that you see the highest up there, Josh, we couldn't get the fountain turned off, even I couldn't get it turned off in time. And so he put on his full water gear and climbed up there, and in the water lifted her up and convinced her to trust him. She, she couldn't hear anybody else, but she, she heard him, and he helped her down that ladder, and a good Samaritan gave us her shawl, and we wrapped it around her so she had something dry once she got off of there. And from there, the firefighters, the paramedics, they took her to Sutter Emergency Room. And it was hard, you know, to watch this 50-something-year-old woman having probably the worst moment in her life, stuck on our fountain in Caesar Chavez Plaza at 3:30 in the afternoon. And I was so proud of our police department, and I was so proud of our firefighters, but I also was completely struck by the fact that we had nothing. We, a passerby gave us the right kind of blanket to help her. She'd taken off her dress, and another homeless person had thrown it in the fountain. You know, she had a dog with her that we had to figure out, police officers figured out what to do there, too, because they took her to the hospital. There were a lot of components to serving this woman that were really difficult, and a lot of resources. That's about half of the people who were there. We had parks, rangers, police, fire, all of our impact teams. It was, and every one of them had a heart to help that lady. But this is a new day for us on this But this is a new day for us on this whole-person care, because if we had our integrated mobile health system, we would have had an ambulance there with a mental health clinician and a person to help her with something more specific, more targeted than just an ER visit. And we would have had more people, more resources. We would have been more prepared. And while I am insanely proud of police and fire, I don't know how they do this all day. And four times today, they did something similar to this. I just happened to be the person who was the passerby who called this in today. And, Mayor, I think this should be our number-one priority. She should be our number-one priority. And if we can use this system and this funding to help her and the others who are out there in this crisis moment in our city, then, I know you have a high number you want to get to. But for me, you know, today, it's her. One. One's my number today. And if we can just help several ones of her on this day, worst day of her life, then we will have been a success. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. That is quite a story. Unfortunately, it's a story that happens on a daily basis in our streets and in our neighborhoods and all over the region, not just in the city of Sacramento. I think that today marks a strong new start in the way that the city will be trying to move forward on these issues. And it is really thanks to the can-do spirit of our mayor. I meant that earlier today when I said that. You know, we are the indomitable city. We don't really take no for an answer, and you're proving that. But it's also out of necessity, honestly. I was thinking back to the fall of 2013 when Councilmember Chenier, Steve Cohen, and myself were trying to figure out what to do on a variety of these issues, because we didn't have an impact team then. We didn't have an Emily Halkin then. And we were all struggling to figure out how to respond in the way that would help get people off the streets and the services, and really do our moral duty first, and to make sure our residents and everyone else felt good about our community. And so, that we've gotten here today is because of some of that work. And Emily, you were born out of that frustration. And now, on your broad shoulders, you and many others in our city organization are trying to carry forward the commitment we made four years ago to try to figure this out. And I really appreciate you day in, day out, because you're not just trying to do the big $64 million things. You are triaging and troubleshooting lots of different issues on a daily basis. And you've been a great asset to the city as we've moved on this. Sacramento Steps Forward, Sacramento Covered, our health partners, they were there when we tried to create common sense a few years ago. And they continue to be strong partners. And just looking around the room, I see some of those faces. And I know that we're not going to succeed on this for the people who we're trying to help without the housing that we worked on earlier, without the services that we're working on now. But also, I think Councilmember Harris said very wisely, we need our county partner to be at the table, walking hand-in-hand, side-by-side with us to accompany us in serving the same people that we represent, because we overlap. And I know the supervisors have been figuring out how to do that. And this is an opportunity for us to continue to lead with them in addressing the questions that people have been asking us over and over again here in the council chambers. But also, frankly, the residents of our districts get frustrated because it doesn't seem like we can do anything. It's so hard sometimes to figure out what the right answer for any, or set of answers are for any given individual, that the task can seem easier to try to not address than to really try to work one-on-one with some of those people who have serious complications. And they may not know that they want services in those moments, but we have to keep asking. And so, as we go forward in this, and whether it's a risk-reward analysis that we look at, or a risk-benefit, I think that the benefits and the potential here definitely outweigh the risks, but also, we have no choice. In the end, counsel, we have to do as much as we can every day, and we have to figure out a way. And there's not a path for this. But we are going to continue to work with our mayor and our city manager and all our staff to make sure that we are leaving no stone unturned. So, I'm very proud to support this, and I'm glad to see that we have some answers. They may not be the best answers, or always the right answers, but we're still trying. And Councilmember Ashby, I have to tell you that I still don't have an answer to how we help people like the woman that you're talking about, except through a lot of compassion and a lot of outreach. And some of these things, really, we're going to need our federal partners and our state partners as well. But it feels bad to sit up and say we don't have great answers. But I think that the work we're doing today hopefully begins to put a footing under people like this woman that you tried to help today.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
All right, I got it. So, first, I wanted to address Mr. Topping really quickly. At our Law and Legislation Committee hearing today, we passed an ordinance which will soon come to the council, which actually lowers the number of square feet for secondary dwellings, or for dwellings, down to 150 feet, or 150 square feet. So, that is to facilitate the potential of tiny homes. We've been talking to Mr. Waters for many years, and I'd love to see a proposal come forward at some point that we can move forward on that. There are certainly challenges with it, so not that it's a done deal. Placement or siting is also going to be a challenge. And they take a relatively large amount of acreage for numbers of people and numbers of homes. But within that context, I'd love to see something on that. As to what's before us now, I think the risk is not to act on this. There's risk inherent in everything that we do. But this is a critical piece. And, Mr. Hanson, I was actually thinking about the same thing of when we started on this. And Steve, the Steves and I got together and...
He was a Steve sandwich.
It was a Steve sandwich. That's a little scary. But started, that was really the first city money that went to Sacramento Steps Forward, and created the position that Emily is so ably filling. And I think that that was a critical step. I think that this step and what we're doing tonight is actually as important as any vote that I've made in the six years that I've been here. I talked a little bit this afternoon about what we have been doing and where we've been successful in moving ourselves from good to great as a city. And a lot of that has been around the physical infrastructure. And people may disagree with this, but I think that the large projects that we've done, including the arena, including what we're doing on the convention center and the theater, including what we will be doing hopefully on the riverfront and in other places, the Crocker Museum. Those are things to make the city attractive to the creative class who we want to come live here. None of that will work in the long run if we don't really pay attention to the human infrastructure that we have and paying attention to what we need. And the mayor has been a great leader on this as well, what we do for our young people. And I want to come back a little bit to homeless youth, because there's such a high percentage of those young people, and how that fits in here. So, I'll come back to that in a minute. So, I'm really proud to serve on this council and to serve on a council that has taken up this issue. This is not an issue that most cities take up. LA, Los Angeles being a unique case in all things that they do. But I would be hard-pressed to find any other city in California that has taken up this issue, spent as much time, and is now putting as many resources into this. This has historically been a county issue. I know the county is taking large steps forward today in their own budget to address this. And I want to thank the representative of various congregations together. You're completely right. We represent the same folks. We do need to work together. And I think, I'm hoping the mayor will address this in his comments, but this is an open, there is an open invitation to the county to work with us on this grant and on all things we do in homelessness and otherwise, for that matter. And I think there's some pieces of that puzzle that we started on together, which I hope opened the doors. I want to talk a little bit about the Pay for Success model that we have jointly funded with the county and Sutter Health. And this is basically to create a system where we're literally paying nonprofits for the work that they do and having success with a specific target population on specific issues. So, that will look like getting people into housing as we go. And where, rather than just putting out money to do that, there's money that actually comes back into a fund. So, this money that we're starting with, the Sutter money, the city $5 million, those are potential funds to seed a Pay for Success model that takes us well into the future and creates kind of a permanent revolving fund to meet some of the challenges on this issue. In the last meeting that we had with the county, and I want to just kind of update the board members, Supervisor Kennedy and I had, we did get to an agreement around data sharing, around targeting of individuals, and also around some type of service collaboration. We have to do those things. And if we can do those things even at a small level, starting, I think those can open the door to greater collaboration and cooperation. I think it's been said many times, it has been said many times on this council, and I know the mayor will also reiterate it. We have to work with the county to be successful here. There's no question about that. And that is certainly our desire to do that. I think the county has stepped forward in a big way on the triage center, on a number of things that they're funding, I assume, in today's deliberations through their budget process. Those should all be complementary to the things that we're doing, and that would be my hope. I do want to just ask Emily around the issue of homeless youth. And I had some occasion to talk to folks from Wind and other places, and the numbers there are staggering, and how that fits in with this program. I know we've kind of set priorities around homelessness for the vouchers. How would it fit in there? And then, how would it fit in particularly for underage, under-18 youth? So, those two pieces.
Right. So, specifically on the vouchers, there, within the allocation of vouchers that SHRI set aside, there are 100 that are explicitly for homeless youth. I don't, it's not under-18, it's the 18- to 24-year-olds and those exiting foster care. But on whole-person care and targeting youth to this program, again, it will be adults, so 18 to 24. You know, the target population to receive the funds has to be people who use the emergency rooms inappropriately and frequently. And so, one of the first tasks of the program implementers will be deciding, how do we identify those frequent users? And certainly, we'll have to lean on people who, the ER data, as a primary thing. But we can look into other systems and other priorities for our community. The last thing we want to do is to signal to youth, you know, is to have them become the next level of people who do that. So, we'll have an opportunity to refine that target so that we are hitting the populations most in need. And one of the mayor's points earlier from today is that we also want to align this with our homeless point-in-time count. We haven't seen that data yet. But when it comes out, we'll certainly have to size it to the appropriate sub-populations, which I'm assuming homeless youth will be, you know, as they were last time, sort of disproportionately represented.
Oh, I know this will happen, but I want to make sure in the metrics that we're using for success and the data points that we're collecting, that that's something that we can identify as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, with that, I also want to thank the mayor. I mean, we would not have gotten here without you on this, and I think it's critically important. I guess the only thing that I want to also end with is, it's a huge grant. $64 million is a lot of money. But it's a huge challenge before us. And there are other pieces to this puzzle, so I don't think that... And I know this council will not rest saying, okay, we're now done. We're only starting. And there's a long way to go. And we need to think about a number of, both populations, I think, and issues that this will not cover because we're not allowed to by the nature of the grant itself. So, there are other pieces to that puzzle that we still need to look for other partners, whether it's the hospital systems, whether it's certainly law enforcement and public defenders, or fire, that we need to figure out how we do those pieces better as well. And my hope would be, as this gets going, and we've talked about your capacity and bulking that up, but how do we start to have some other conversations around those pieces as well? Because we need to get to them if we're going to meet this challenge. So, thank you, and thank you for all your work. It's been wonderful to work with you on this and really have someone as thoughtful and knowledgeable about this to help us move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jake. Larry, Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mr. President Protim, I mean, Mr. Mayor.
It's an old job.
I don't want this to sound like a Donald Trump cabinet meeting, but good job.
Thank you. Oh, I hope it's different than that.
Emily, one question for you. If I were to come back five years from now, or if anyone were to come back five years from now, and this program was successful, what would we see? What kind of world would we be living in? Can you describe the impact this would have on people just walking down the street, or regular citizens?
I want Emily to answer, but that's the first line of my closing argument here.
Well, I don't want to stir your thunder.
Go ahead.
Well, I think there's a few things, some which are visible and some which are not. I mean, certainly, you know, visible homelessness should be reduced. People suffering on the streets should be reduced. People's health should be improved and long-term stability. So, as you're walking through the community, one of the underlying goals is you'll see a marked reduction in suffering that you see on the street. I think the other takeaway in five years, which won't be visible necessarily to folks walking on the street, is that we will have built a system that hopefully can live on. We will prove that coordinating efforts and coordinating resources and being at the same table and working under the same goal does make results, and that the program will live on beyond the five-year pilot, either through the city's efforts, or the county's efforts, or our collaborative efforts, and the efforts of our healthcare partners. But certainly, we are very cognizant that, you know, from the state's perspective, it's improved healthcare of the individual. From our perspective, that is just as important as the improved health and well-being of our community. The answer, the mayor probably can say a little more eloquently than I.
Mayor's going to tackle that, too, so we'll...
No, Emily, you said it well, but I'm going to be real tangible. A moment here. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Carr. And thank you to all my colleagues. And Emily, again, can't thank you or praise you enough. Or really, a Herculean effort, because, boy, the five-day deadline initially, and all the, with this, you know, I sort of half-joked today that I know we are not announcing the opening of the city's Department of Health and Human Services here, but it sort of feels like that in a way. I want to begin with Councilmember Ashby's comments, because on the one hand, I had a hard time listening to that story. I mean, it hit me hard. And yet, I'm glad that you told the story. Because maybe the biggest point here, and it's made by many advocates, week after week, and I know I've tried in a reasonably long public service career to acknowledge and respect this idea that we can no longer turn our backs. We can no longer turn our backs. This woman, who I know is unnamed and protect her privacy and her dignity as much as we can, this is a person who has had a life. She undoubtedly has a family and had a history and was, and at one point in her life, may have been a fully-functional, happy member of our society or our community. And yet, she experienced that indignity today. And there are so many like her. And it's the human suffering that's most important, but it's also, as all of you acknowledge and our constituents feel, it's also...
but it's also, as all of you acknowledge and our constituents feel, it's also a tremendous impact on the community as well and its quality of life. And that must be acknowledged as well, and that's not, not compassionate to say that. People have the right to live peacefully and have the right to not have all the things that go on, whether it be in the park or in neighborhoods, under the freeway. This is not acceptable. It is not dignified. It is not what a civil community ought to either aspire to or frankly to accept. And yet, we've done the best we can to manage it, but as we've managed it, it's only gotten worse. It's time to stop managing it. I think it's also important to recognize it's a hard problem, that there are no cures, that there are no miracles, that there are people, despite all of our efforts, even with this tremendous investment, that are still going to be homeless. But better, we must do. Much better, we must do. And I'd like to go back to, Emily, my favorite chart, if we may, and you know what that is on the PowerPoint, because I think it's really important that we focus back on this. I'm not a, I hope I'm not a micromanager, but Emily allowed me the ability to provide some input into this chart, because I do think that this, even though it's, you know, a little wonky, expresses the hope, but also the challenges. And I want to go back to the three principles that you articulated earlier: alignment, integration, and catalyze. And I want to begin with alignment. Councilmember Carr asked, what is the goal here? Because this is a piece of, a major piece of a larger system that preexists where, as Ryan Lufpro points out, we're helping a lot of people, just not enough. So what is the goal? I think one of the problems with the homeless issue in Sacramento and everywhere is that we are afraid to state a goal. And as a result, people don't know whether we're really making progress or not. They feel that it's getting worse, but we must state a goal. And here's my goal, and that ought to be our goal. We need to get 2,000 of the most chronically homeless people off the streets with dignity over the next three years, and use this resource and our other resources to provide the sorts of prevention and early intervention assistance that will prevent the next cohort of 2,000 people from replacing them. 2,000, over three years. I'm willing to put out a goal and, I suppose, hold myself accountable. If we fall short, won't be by much, because for the first time, we have the capacity and the resources to do all that we know works. Assertive outreach, case management, supportive services, and both emergency shelter and permanent housing. I'm going to try not to be too long here, but I, and I won't drag on, but the points, I think, are important here as we set the stage. On alignment, let's recognize that this is a healthcare grant. It's a Medicaid grant. It's not a housing grant, it's a Medicaid grant. What the federal government and the state government have said is that we want you, community, and you, City of Sacramento, to have the flexibility to use Medi-Cal dollars to serve people who are frequent users of emergency rooms and other emergency services. That's great, but here's the danger. If we do not align this with the point-in-time count that you described a moment ago, Emily, and focus on the woman that Councilmember Ashby spoke about so poignantly a few moments ago, we will help a lot of people, but we won't make people feel different in this community about the homeless problem. And of course, it's not just that woman. We know who a lot of these people are, and I hope that they're frequent users of emergency services, because then they, that will easily align. But it's the people that are talking to themselves, I don't want to identify, I wouldn't identify people by name, but I have, I have a number of the people in my head, and we all know who they are. And that's why the outreach piece is so important. It's great and essential that we put social workers and outreach workers at emergency rooms, at shelters, at the places of access, even the jails. But we have to employ the strategy of assertive community outreach by getting clinically-trained, more clinically-trained people on our streets intervening with people. And here's the number-one stereotype that we must defy, that those who are treatment-resistant are treatment-resistant permanently, that they're treatment-resistant permanently. Because if we buy into that and we believe that, and all we do is make one or two passes at somebody and say, we've got services available for you, but you need to come on in, and then expect that that person who is traumatized, who's mentally ill, who has been through God knows what, is going to readily accept the services. It doesn't work that way. But let me tell you my experience from implementing the Mental Health Services Act or seeing the implementation of the Mental Health Services Act, 73,000, what we call full-service partnerships. If we are consistent in our outreach and have the trained people to build the trust between them and the most treatment-resistant person out on those streets, and we stick with it, and it can take weeks, it can take many months, we'll get 80% to 90% of those people off the streets into housing and treatment, if we stick with it. So I don't want to hear treatment resistance as an excuse for all this can't work. The main point is that this must be aligned with our overall homeless goals and not be sort of a niche program that helps a lot of needy people, but not the people who are, who need the most and frankly are affecting the quality of life of the larger community. So I'd put it this way, two tests. There are two tests. One, are we going to help 6,800 people, 3,200 people with intensive service? I'm very confident that the answer to that question is going to be yes, no doubt about it. Going to do it. Got the health providers, you got the city, we've got the federal money, we're going to help 6,800 people, I'm absolutely confident. That's test one. Test two is over three years, Councilmember Carr, do the people of Sacramento feel a difference? Does it feel different? Can we say with some confidence that it's not perfect, but it is significantly better? That's test two, and we must pass with flying colors, both tests one and two. And then there's integration. And this is not only the county question, but it's the integration with our existing continuum of care. Sacramento steps forward, all of the other resources that we have. An integration we needed at many levels. I sat in a room today with 75 providers and people who do this every day. This is going to require an unprecedented level of cooperation, and all of us sort of leaving our way of doing it, unless it's the best way of doing it, a little bit to the side, so that we're all figuring out how we do it better together for all the elements. But integration is also about our relationship with the county, and I know that there have been some strains. And, you know, I acknowledge my part in that, right? I'm being kind of aggressive about all of this. But when you look at this chart, and this is why I wanted the chart put up here, and if you can point, if you notice bold lines, I don't know how to describe them, that are what we control, but you see the one line at the very bottom that is a broken, broken line arrow? That's something we don't control. We don't have mental health and substance abuse services. We don't. I may have been the author of Prop 63 and SB 82 and all that, but this city does not control those mental health services. So working with the county to create one seamless system is not some luxury, and it can't be about political jurisdictional issues here. We must work together, because what happens if they create their own separate system of housing, and they're trying to work with the same people we are, maybe different people, and it's all disconnected? We won't succeed. The housing issue, that voucher decision was a big one. 1,755 discreet housing units, that's 1,755 out of the 2,300, Emily, that you estimate we will have available as discreet housing resources. Well, you know what? Under the formal law here, the county controls those vouchers, we control the public housing units. So if their investment strategy is different or inconsistent with whole-person care, well then we're again going to be working at cross purposes, we can't have that. We must work together and develop one seamless system that, yes, takes advantage of $64 million new resources. And then we applaud and thank the county for the budget work they are doing and going to do on triage, on emergency shelter, on housing themselves, on mental health and substance abuse. Integration. And finally, we must catalyze all the resources we have to meet our goal of getting 2,000 people off the streets. And there's a lot of hope out there. We talk about housing. We obviously, we're counting so much on our partner, Michelle Dozier and the SHRA, to help us not only be that bridge with the county, but to figure out how we deploy these housing resources in a way that makes this a success. But there's more hope on the way. No place like home. The statewide initiative, securitizing a small portion of Prop 63, that's coming, about a year from now, I think. It's $2 billion, our city and county and maybe our region. We're going to get a big piece of that, and we're going to be able to add to our housing I want to look at one other box here, and that is this question that comes up rightfully every week about, okay, you know, this is beginning formally January 1st, even though we're beginning now. What about now? What about emergency shelter? On the 27th of June, we are having a housing workshop. And I hope that as we discuss emergency shelter, both at the council and in our communities over the days ahead, that that discussion is had now in a totally different light, because those who would resist shelter or triage, even in over-concentrated areas of the city, understandably say, leading to what? Shelter leading to what? Well, now we have at least, not just the beginnings, but a significant piece of the answer to assure communities that we're actually focused on systemic change and reducing the number of people on the streets. And when it comes to money and shelter, let's remember two things. We still have $3.1 million left over from the council's $5 million investment from the mid-year for homeless-related issues. We're in continued conversations with our partners from Sutter and others who have put forward a complementary initiative, Getting to Zero. There may be more healthcare dollars to come down in addition to whole-person care. And so let's approach that discussion on the 27th of June in a new light and with a new spirit, recognizing that now shelter and triage potentially leads to somewhere and to something more hopeful and productive. Finally, the question, who asked the question? Again, it was Councilmember Ashby, asked the question about risk. And this came up a lot in the early discussions with the county about risk. I want to ask Emily this question. Aside from the general fund money that we have already committed, or money that we might choose as a city council to commit going forward, is there any risk to the city general fund in going forward with this initiative?
No, no.
Thank you. I won't say we rehearsed that answer, but, but, but we talked a lot about it, because this, it's a, it's an important question, and it's a question I had as well. But here's the deal. The only risk is that we don't succeed. The only risk is that we don't get years four and five of the federal money. There's no risk to the general fund, except the money that we choose to put in, either now or on an annual basis, in the expectation that we're going to get more people off the street. So yes, this is a proud night, and, and yet, we all know our work has just begun. I am confident that if we implement this with the same spirit, energy, and urgency that led to our decision to apply in the first place and the application itself, we will not fail. We will help thousands of people along the way, and just as important, we will give the people of Sacramento the real sense that the most intractable of social problems can actually be made better. We have a motion and a second to accept this grant. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. That's nine to nothing. Thank you all very, very much. Okay, that is the close of the formal agenda this evening. We do have council ideas and questions, and then we will adjourn. And we have an appointment to make. Do we make that at the very end?
Sure.
Or do you want to do that now? Let's do that now, so that we're...
Okay, so the one appointment we have for this evening is the Sacramento Youth Commission. It's District 7 appointment, and it's Sophie Vang. That's it.
Sophie Vang, okay. Do we need a motion?
No.
No, we're just accepting that. Okay. Okay, let's begin with Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with an item that, just want to kind of update the council on as far as the diversity policy that we said would come back to the council. We have already put in place an equity policy, and now the committee that you chartered, that you put in charge of coming back with a diversity policy, myself, Councilmember Garrett, Councilmember Carr, and Councilmember Ashby, working together to come with a diversity policy. That work has been done, and our next step is to forward that policy to the Law and Ledge Committee, and then ultimately, our hope is that it will come before this committee for adoption. So I wanted to give that update to let you know that we are making progress and excited about the progress. I want to thank the committee members for all their hard work in making this happen.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Look forward to seeing that and I'm sure passing it enthusiastically when it gets to the council.
Great. So a couple of announcements I want to give you, just because I have the microphone at this time, and I see that we are loaded up. The Youth Commission, Youth Advisory Committee, has their monthly meetings every single second Wednesday of the month from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, at the Pennell Center. We're calling for all young leaders that are ready to make a difference in the city to come forth and get involved. And for more information, they can contact Kasanya in my office at 916-808-7192. And if you're a young person listening, we're calling out for you. And if you're an older person that knows a younger person, we're asking you to be responsible in getting them to come and make a difference in the community. Bright idea, this is at Common Church, Common Grounds Church, on Wednesday, June 14th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. Now, this is a new idea. This is youth in grades nine through 12. They're invited to join Common Ground Community Development Corporation and the Health Education Council to learn about how to create a business. Not only are they learning about how to create a business and become a young entrepreneur, they're also learning how to... they're also learning how to handle money and handle their finances. Now, the great thing about this, this is an eight-week program, and it includes lunch every single day, and it is free. So for more information and details about start date and all those other things, the name is Troy Nichols, and the number is 916-689-3010. And if I went too fast in that information, you can see me after the meeting or you can contact my office for additional details. Now, District Seven loves listening to our residents. And so therefore, we are bringing City Hall to the neighborhood. That will take place on Thursday, the 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Robbie Waters Library. And we encourage you to come out, get your ideas and thoughts and questions all answered right at the Robbie Waters Library instead of coming down here to City Hall. In my opinion, just my opinion, there is no better way to spend a Friday evening than to go to the District Seven trucks and such. It's at Goshabend Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. You've got tasty food. You've got tons of family fun. Plus, you get to meet new neighbors and community residents. So that's a great time on a Friday afternoon from 5:00 to 8:00. You don't have to cook. Lots of trucks out there to give you fun food. And every single time, there's a different activity that's going to take place. And then my final announcement, because this is the first annual, this is the first time it's ever happened, ever, in my district. It may have happened in the city of Sacramento, but never in District Seven. After the Fourth of July Parade, that happens every single year in District Seven, after the parade, we're going to be hosting the first annual pet pageant. That's right. If you've got a pet, you want to bring your pet out there because we've got categories for your pet that include the cutest costume, the most patriotic, and the furry and the fabulous. So this is an opportunity to showcase those furry animals that you love so much and come out and put them in place and to preregister. And this is a free event, so no cost for you whatsoever other than how much you're going to spend to make your pet look super and incredible. Pre-register, call my office. Yvette at Yvette Cumberland at cityofsacramento.org. And actually, it's Y Cumberland at cityofsacramento.org. Easy for me to say. And that concludes my announcements. You got a pet?
Excellent.
Do you have a pet?
I do.
Well, you can, look, you got to sign up. This is, this is bring your pet out and have a pet parade.
I'm in.
Come on. Pet pageant.
Councilmember Hanson.
I have a quick AB 1234 report. Thanks to Councilmember Chenier, I was able to go to the Transit Center Transit Board Member Training in Minneapolis and learned a lot about effective transit systems. Also, I have a request, actually, for Councilmember Carr that from now on, you do Mr. Jennings' announcements because you were so good at it a few weeks ago. I think even better than our vice mayor himself. Oh, you were listening? I actually have an actual request for the city manager. An idea has come up to look at creating a city bicycle advisory committee rather than having the city-county advisory committee because we're doing so much work in the city to try to create conditions of safety through Vision Zero, to bring better infrastructure to neighborhoods that don't have it. And one of the things that came up at the PNP committee today was what if we had our own version? We already staffed the existing one. And I think it's quite a lot of work for Jennifer Donlin, who's just done a tremendous job. But it would allow each council member, hopefully, to appoint someone from their district to participate and obviously give the mayor a requisite number of seats on it. But it could be a way to even accelerate more the work that we're doing to create an active transportation leadership model for cities around the country, so.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While they bring up the slide, we did discuss in PNP today how we could better balance our commissions and boards that are appointed by the council. And we will be working on that in the next few weeks, collecting some information, some data on who's there now and what we can do to better outreach. So the first announcement I want to make is, that coming up.
I'm sorry.
Pat Chen.
Say again?
Okay, there you go.
And could you explain what that means? What you just said?
Yes, some of the boards, we have some communities that are very active, and they bring some very qualified people to PNP. Some communities bring no one or hardly anyone ever. We have a lack of gender diversity. We have a lack of ethnic diversity. So we are looking at things that we can do to increase the, at least the applicant pool for our boards and commissions. I think the mayor charged us with doing that a couple times ago.
Yeah, absolutely.
First thing I want to announce is the District Eight Park Day. This is going to be this Sunday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Nielsen Park. Nielsen Park is pretty shaded. We have food trucks there, the climbing wall. There'll be a band. Lenoris P. W. Lewis will be performing. This is all for free. Now, this is for everyone. We're going to start a heat wave this Saturday. It's going to be over 100 degrees for a week. So, one, we all need to make sure if we're having events that we are providing water, that we're providing shade, and there should be no strenuous activity outside. Plus, we have to really look after our elderly who are living in homes that aren't air-conditioned. Make sure that we are checking on our neighbors to make sure they're okay. So this heat wave is going to be with us. And it's going to be 105 degrees on Sunday for the Park Day. So we'll have misters and water, and we'll be sitting in the shade. Put the next one up there. This Saturday, before it gets really hot, we're going to have the swim event at the Pennell Center. This is sponsored by Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority. And they're going to teach water safety at the center. This event will be from 11:45 to 12:45. And then after that, free swim. So come on out. Good way to cool off on Saturday. And finally, this is for District Eight, young people only. And I'll tell you, Mr. Mayor, how this started. We invested half a million dollars in Cabrillo Park Pool. And after the swim season, we took inventory, and hardly anyone was using the pool. And when we asked the neighbors why, they said because they couldn't afford to pay the $2 entry fee. So what we've done is, in conjunction with the library, if a young person goes to the library, the MLK or North Laguna, read five books, they will get a free pass to the swimming pool. That easy. Every time you read five books, you get another free pass. So all summer long, there's no need not to...
And include us as well, or?
We'll make an exception for you. So anyone in District Eight who goes to a District Eight school, read five books and get a free swim pass every time you read five books. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. That's great. Great project, great incentive. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple of comments and then a few announcements here. First of all, today, early in the morning, we had a firefighter that was injured during a call for service from a fire down in the South area, Dominic DeRosa. He's recovering at the Burn Institute at UC Davis from his injuries. Want to wish him well. He's with his family out there. He was responding to a fire in a vacant building. And I think today at Ledge and Law, we had a conversation about how do we enforce both vacant lots and vacant buildings so that property owners who are managing these are maintaining them? Seems to be that the building may have had some people living in there and causing, that may have caused the fire. But investigation's still ongoing, so. Our thoughts are, go out to Dominic and Dominic DeRosa for his service to the Fire Department. Also, wanted to thank our Fire Chief and our Fire Chief White, Fire Marshal Lee, and Inspector Bodick for their efforts in getting the information out about illegal fireworks and when fireworks are allowed to be used. And I think just for folks who are out there watching, fireworks are illegal all year round, even the ones you can buy at the Safe and Sound except for that small time between June 28th and July 4th. But what is always illegal are the fireworks that explode or fly in the air. And we were today meeting with Senior Vice Commander Norma Christiansen from VFW Post 57, who was discussing about the impacts that it has to veterans, the use of illegal fireworks that explode, that make noises. And so make sure we report that out to our, report any illegal firework activity. You can come out to our website and look at that. Our Fire Chief, along with other Fire Chiefs in the next couple of weeks, are going to be doing a public relations campaign throughout the state about the issues of fireworks as we get closer to 4th of July. Lastly, want to make a, save your dates for three events. The Nepenthe Town Hall is going to be on Thursday, June 15th, at 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. For those folks over in the campus commons community, come and come out to, so we can talk about traffic issues and traffic safety at the Nepenthe Clubhouse. Also, on Friday, June 23rd, from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock, we're going to have the Tahoe Park Food Truck. Again, come out there and join, bring your bicycle. We get free bike valet by the support of the Sacramento Area Bike Association. And the proceeds will also help out our Front Street Shelter. And lastly, the first-ever College Glen Food Truck Mania is going to happen on Saturday, June 24th, at Glenbrook Park at 4:00 p.m. And the effort and the proceeds there, some of the proceeds are going to help out the College Glen Little League there. So want to encourage that folks come and save those dates out there. It's July 15th for the Town Hall, June 23rd for Tahoe Park Food Trucks, and then June 24th for the College Glen Food Trucks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Geta, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit more on the mundane side. The River Park Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday, June 15th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Fremont Presbyterian Church, Room E210. The French Film Festival opens this Friday, June 16th, and continues through June 25th at the Crest and IMAX Theater. So you can get all the information you want at sacramentofrenchfilmfestival.org. This is sort of a tradition. Steve Cohen was a big supporter of the French Film Festival, and I'm following in his footsteps. I have office hours this Saturday, June 17th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the South Natomas Community Center in the Arts and Crafts Room. That should be an interesting conversation. And lastly, I wanted to say a couple of words about Pops in the Park. We have another installment this Saturday, June 17th, at McKinley Park from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And the music will be by Mumbo Gumbo. The food booths and beer garden open early at 5:00 p.m. And Councilmember Carr, I have to disagree with you just a little bit because 103 is not going to stop me from dancing, nor my constituents. But I suppose I'll have to have resuscitation crews on site and take your advice. We will have water. We'll also have beer, and I'm not sure how that plays into the equation. But a good time will be had by all. So far, the Pops this year have been the biggest ever as far as attendance, and the fun meter exploded last week. So I thank the bands and all the participants.
Seriously, Jeff, I spoke to Office of Emergency Service as well as Fire, and they both recommend no strenuous activities on a 105-degree day.
You know...
Fans, go for it.
It's only 103.
Yes, it's only going to be 103 on Saturday at my event. Now, you're going to have to be careful. I got to tell you though, Larry...
I think Councilmember Carr's admonition of the larger community is correct. People got to be careful. And drink water, water, water.
Absolutely true.
Okay, very good. Lot of good times. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick announcement. You know, we have had an increase in shootings. One of them occurred in Oak Park a couple of days ago. Mr. Guerra's had a few. So School Board Member Jesse Ryan and I are going to be hosting a meeting at the Oak Park Community Center on the 22nd from 6:30 to 8:00. We'll bring, we want to talk about a number of issues, including neighborhood cleanup, but also just the violence that's taking care of, taking place in the neighborhood. We'll have the city police onboard. We'll have our gang intervention folks who are coming to talk as well. But really looking to neighborhood solutions for some of this and working with our law enforcement officers. So again, that's at the Oak Park Community Center, June 22nd from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce a couple of things. Coming up on Saturday, June 24th, we're going to have the Fifth Annual Multicultural Festival at Hagenwood Park in Sacramento. This will be the fifth year of us having a, hopefully, a very successful event. And we have some entertainment that we have coming in that have done some incredible things in the music industry. So it's a free event. It'll start at 11:00 a.m. Again, on Saturday, the 24th, end at about 6:00 p.m. that evening. So come out. You'll start seeing flyers. And if you're listening to the radio, different stations will have information about it on the radio as well. Also, yesterday, we had what I consider to be a major accomplishment in District Two in really going a ways towards alleviating the food desert in District Two. We had the demolition and soon to be the new construction of a new grocery store, the grocery outlet. And a very nice press conference yesterday. So it was covered by most of the media outlets, so I'm very appreciative of that. And then last is that we had, a couple of weeks ago, we had a very successful taco festival in District Two. I mentioned it briefly, but I just wanted to emphasize that District Two has had the taco festival for, I think this was our fourth, third year, fourth year. And if I'm not mistaken, it's still the only taco festival